It doesn't talk about what happens to learners when they come for the first time at school. Our learners come to school not knowing how to read and write. But instead of that, we introduce them to another language. Meaning that we are taking them ten years backwards. Because they come to school knowing how to speak. We only need to teach them how to read and write. But instead of teaching them how to read and write, we teach them how to speak. Cognitive development happens in a language. Whether it is an indigenous language or any other language, it happens in one language. But what we see happening in our schools is that before learners can be taught how to read and write in any language, another language is introduced to them, that is at grade one. And then at grade two, grade three, the second additional language is taught. I mean, learners from a Sichuan environment being taught in another language that is not Sichuan. They are not being taught, they are just being given a language that they have learnt for the past seven years before they came to school. So much as I understand what the bill is saying here, and I approve what it is saying about G E T. It is very quiet about what should happen at foundation phase at grade one. I repeat, cognitive development happens in a language. That is why you see the grade twelve learners of other nationalities having ten distinctions. Because they were born in that language, they were inducted at school in that language, they learnt in that language for ten years. Instead of doing six languages, they even take ten languages. While our learners can hardly get six distinctions in all the subjects. Language in education policy at foundation phase needs to be included in the bill. I support the bill.
No, thank you very much. Me note hands this side now. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I'm coming, Mama, don't worry. I'm coming. Again, if you feel that you don't want to speak, please get a form, sign a form. And if you have done so, we kindly request that you open space for people that are still outside to come in so that they can make their contributions too. Thank you.
I'm Cornelia Brace. I oppose the bill, especially clause thirty-seven. Committee members, fellow citizens, I will be speaking in English today, even though it is not my preferred language, to accommodate those who are a majority. Interesting enough, home language is not a problem for home educators. Education is not a system. The aim of education is not to turn children into assets of the state or to prepare them for the workforce. The aim of education is to nourish a soul on truth, beauty and goodness. Just as the responsibility for nourishment of a child's body belongs to the parents, so does the responsibility for the nourishment of the child's soul. Education is the responsibility of parents. They may choose to delegate this responsibility to other educators, but that is their free choice and should not be protected, it should be protected and not regulated. Clause thirty-seven of the bill disregards this fact and should therefore be rejected. Point one in this clause states that home educators and parents have to register with the department. And point two, that the H O D has to approve the application. This is a confusion of roles. Parents should not have to ask permission to educate their own children. They may allow the state to educate them if they so choose. Compulsory registration will place a huge administrative burden on the D B E. Evidence shows that it is struggling to bear it. In a recent survey of home education in the North West Province conducted by Learn Free South Africa, forty percent of those who attempted to register had not yet received an answer from the department a year after attempting to do so. Just as the state cannot dictate the grocery store where I should buy food for my children, it cannot dictate means and content of education to parents. It cannot require that curricular outcomes and assessment be C A P S compliant. Clause thirty-seven will cause us to pay for compulsory assessment based on a curriculum that we do not follow or approve of. My husband and I choose to home educate because we want to give our children a classical education. This means that our educational objectives are precisely not comparable to those prescribed by C A P S. Instead of the mastery of content and subject areas, we want our children to be trained in virtue and the classical learning skills of logic, rhetoric, grammar, research, reasoning and debate. This will enable them to master any content they may choose to study for the rest of their lives. Our children are flourishing. C A P S enforcing assessors will not understand these objectives, much less know how to assess them. We would have to interrupt our program to accommodate what we opposed, the mere examination of regurgitated content. Home educators are not the enemy of the state. In fact, we relieve its burden. We should not be threatened with prison sentences for non-compliance to a bill that shows little understanding and consideration of home education as an educational alternative. I, along with Masukas from the A C D P, ask for research before regulation. Point sixteen of this clause is an undisguised chilling attempt to give the minister the ability to make home education, which is a constitutional right, impossible by means of limitation and regulation. We recognize it as an undemocratic sleight of hand and object to it in the strongest terms. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Christoph Schillenberg, chairperson of the School Governing Body of Larsku Lichtenberg. Ladies and gentlemen, Thomas Niere. We are here on behalf of our children and on behalf of our children, I have to object to the Basic Education Laws Amendment Bill. I do not support specifically on the grounds of section six-two of the Schools Act, which states that the power to determine language policy of a school rests with the school governing body. Clause five C of the bill proposes amending this section to limit the S G B's power. The same clause also states that the H O D can direct a school to implement more than one language of education, while not elaborating on the practical and sustainable implementation of the H O D's decision. I oppose this clause because the final authority or approval does not rest with the S G B, but with the H O D. People, this is not only an Afrikaans problem, although you may think so. The day might come when an H O D decides that Sichuan our schooling in primary school is problematic. What will you do then? Clause four D of the bill amends section five-five of the Schools Act and seeks to limit the school governing bodies to determine the school's admission policy. All around us, I see farm schools struggling with capacity because children are transported there from the nearby townships via bus. What will happen when those S G Bs do not have the final approval on capacity and admission policy? The final authority given to the H O D also contradicts the cooperative partnership between the Minister, the Provincial Department of Education and school governing bodies as envisaged and prescribed in section forty-one H of our constitution. I oppose this clause. And then clause fourteen of the Amendment Bill proposes the introduction or inclusion of Article eighteen A four A in the Schools Act, which expects all S G B members to annually declare their financial interests as well as the financial interests of their spouses or life partners or their close families. I oppose this clause. Not even the Companies Act or the Finance Management Act expect such a comprehensive disclosure. It is simply an unreasonable violation of S G B members' privacy. And then, on a very personal note, I want to support the previous speaker and I object to clause number thirty-seven on homeschooling. I also have an autistic child. And it is not fair of government to expect people to register their homeschool facility and be violated by assessments. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Adrian Kriel from Larsku Lichtenberg, the S G B Chair. I have been welcomed in the most welcoming way. Thank you, Mafi King. I want to object against the Bella Bill. And grounds being, this afternoon we are here wasting a lot of taxpayers' money. We are here and I think government is missing the point totally. This past week, there have been one death due to bit toilets, a problem that's been lingering in our life for years. There's been three taxi killings of learners. We should have been in a crisis meeting debating how to resolve these issues. I think government, this committee shouldn't have been here this afternoon at all. Is the children the important people or are we? I want to further carry on and say, studies indicate that on any given day, forty-one thousand teachers are absent from school. Shouldn't that be addressed? Further studies indicate that not even fifty percent of the curriculum on any given state is completed by schools. Shouldn't that have precedence? The committee here this afternoon is debating aspects that's secondary to the more important aspects. You are not contributing, there's much, much more serious aspects that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Are you supporting or not supporting the bill? Oh, okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Isaac Olifir. I'm the S G B Chairperson for Larsku Lichtenberg. I would like to note my reservations, but also my support regarding some of the proposed amendments that we are discussing here today. Firstly, those that I have reservations about and do not support. Specifically clause four D of the bill that proposes amending section five-five of the existing legislation by introducing a provision which seeks to limit the S G B's power to determine a school's admissions policy. But then also similarly clause five C of the bill that likewise proposes amending section six of the Schools Act by adding subsections five through twenty and again also seeking to limit the S G B's power to determine a school's language policy. In both these proposed amendments, the final decision regarding a school's language and admission policy will reside with the H O D. This does not align with the cooperative partnership between the S G B, the provincial government and the ministry as prescribed by section forty-one H of the constitution. And it seeks to potentially reject the opinions of those parents whose children attend the schools in question. It also seeks to potentially undermine the efforts and the work done by the democratically elected S G B who in most cases are made up of highly passionate and capable people whose sole objective is to seek the best educational environment for their children. Furthermore, clause fourteen proposes the insertion of section eighteen A four A, which will compel all members of an S G B to disclose on an annual basis all their financial interests and those of their immediate families. While clause thirty-four will require an S G B to submit to the H O D a quarterly financial report within thirty days after the end of each quarter. Now, these proposed amendments will undoubtedly impose an untenable administrative burden on both the schools and the departments, who will respectively have to compile, submit and work through mountains of reports using resources and capacity that they simply do not have. Would it not make more sense to impose this amendment on schools who are lacking in their financial management rather than enforcing this on everybody? Lastly, I do support clause two A, which makes grade R compulsory, as well as clause eight A, which aims to regulate the possession, consumption and sale of alcohol on school premises amongst others. In closing, I think that we are all cognizant of the fact that some public schools and their governance structures are dysfunctional. It's a pity however, that some sound proposals in this bill are overshadowed by others that will only serve to frustrate and complicate the efforts of those schools and their S G Bs that are functional and that have proven themselves to be effective. In my opinion, these amendments will not close those gaps on those schools where inefficiency reigns and will only divert attention from the real problems. Thank you.
Thank you to the committee for taking the time away from your own families to acknowledge our concerns. My name is Janine and I am a homeschool mom of three amazing children. I'm here to voice my objection towards clause thirty-seven as a whole. The bill requires that the head of the department must approve our application if the criteria of subsection two A and B are met. However, we as home educators does not take the decision to homeschool lightly. We do extensive research on each curriculum and homeschooling style before we start the process. We therefore are the expert on home education and we surely are the experts on our children. The D B E does not know my child and therefore do not know what is in the best interest of my child. The D B E also currently shows little knowledge on home education and therefore do not have enough knowledge to decline any application to homeschooling. With regards to assessments, there is only one competent assessor, it's me. Due to the fact that I spend almost hundred percent of my time with my children, there cannot be a more competent assessor than myself. I assess them as a whole person and not just as an academic subject. I assess them emotionally and spiritually as well, guiding and correcting them in love. No assessor will be more competent than a parent and no assessment can assess as comprehensively as a parent does. We want the best for our children. We request that all applications be approved from the date of application submitted with no home visits. An online registration process can be easily implemented. Only in the cases where a case of abuse or concerns about a child's welfare are being brought under the attention of the D B E, then only a formal investigation can be done into those cases with a social worker, which on the other hand makes this matter a social matter and should be governed by the social acts. Just as schools cannot regulate social matters, so should home education not be limited due to these concerns. Let each bill deal with its own concerns. Social matters should be governed under the social bills, not the education legislation. And loudly we object subsection sixteen. This regulation gives the minister more power than the parent and even God. This is an infringement on my and my child's right as a South African citizen. With this subsection, we can be bound by any decision the minister makes driven by their own agendas, beliefs or religion, taking our right from freedom in total control, making us all slaves to the minister or the government of South Africa. We propose the D B E goes back to the drawing board to do some extensive research into home education and bring forth a bill that regulates home education on its own, taking all the aspects of home education into account as one size does not fit all.
To the committee, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come and give my support to the Bella Bill. For the following reasons. The bill addresses challenges regarding learner access to quality basic education as some schools deny learners admission. The bill will address uncertainty about home education legislation through clause thirty-seven. Ensuring all learners are registered and their interests are protected by legislation and the department is critical. The bill seeks to improve S G B members' accountability through declaration through clause fourteen. Enabling the head of the department to investigate school financial records and limiting S G B powers where capacity is inadequate is an intervening provision supports schools through clause seventeen. On the support, on the withdrawal of one or more functions of an S G B and addresses challenges which vary per school. Non-tombi adduans from Harbius Fontaine Tikhane, supporting a parent from local schools. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairperson, committee members. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Anneli Rudman. I am a homeschooling mother from Clarkstort. I respectfully submit that we oppose clause thirty-seven of the Bella Bill for the following reasons. My husband and I have raised three daughters and have home educated all of them. We've always been committed to and interested or involved, actively involved in our children's interests. Our youngest is constantly mistaken to be older than her fourteen years due to her maturity and confidence. She loves learning and has taken true ownership of it by God's grace and the intrinsic value of a classical home education. Nobody understands the educational needs of our children better than we, the parents. And this is a principle that we believe should be defended and respected. However, clause thirty-seven explicitly seeks to centralize home education in the hands of education authorities, thereby stripping parents of their God-given authority. We believe every family has the right to choose the curriculum best suited to the individual needs of their children and should not be restricted by what education authorities deem the best, especially due to the glaring lack of comprehensive understanding of home education in South Africa. We oppose the requirement for forced assessment against C A P S. Our goals for assessment differ vastly from the methods C A P S employ. Following a classical education, we explore and assess our child's true understanding of her subjects and help her to think about God's world in an integrated way which allows her to express her ideas. And as parents, we evaluate that expression. Thus, our child cannot follow one approach and be assessed against the scope and sequence of another. It'll confuse and frustrate her and utterly ruin her joy of learning. We are adamant that assessment must respect the nature of the approach that home educators are following. We consider unwarranted visits from officials who are not adequately informed on home education and how it works as a serious invasion of our right of privacy. We oppose the stringent measures and plethora of proposed registration requirements that clause thirty-seven aims to impose on and burden home educators with, thereby deliberately making home education near impossible. We respectfully submit that the powers granted to the minister by clause thirty-seven are excessive and premature, especially in the light of the lack of in-depth research regarding home education, resulting in the already stated lack of comprehensive understanding of home education. We submit therefore that clause thirty-seven should be scrapped. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ronald Sesin. Meaning if those who are decrying clause number eight in terms of the selling of alcohol, they are in mainstream. What about us, those who are in schools like a school for the severely intellectual disabled children as well as the profoundly intellectually disabled children? I'm a principal of a school in a Boopelung special school just around the corner. I think that a person who proposed this law must be looked for and criminally be charged. I'm saying this because just think, a school like mine, children are staying in a hostel and those after-parties will last until when? A child will be missing, someone will help himself with that particular child. And the poor principal will have to write the reports, someday he will even retire prematurely. Because as the accounting officer, now your head will be chopped instead of the criminal who proposed that particular clause. pertaining to the composition of the S G B in a school for the severely intellectually disabled. And let me reminisce this. On the seventh, I received a call from one of the principal who was saying, "I'm with the parents who is here to do admission." And just, I'm saying on the seventh this month, admission this time. And the principal advised, phoned me and said, "How do you advise this parent?" I said, "Let the parent come to my school so that I can actually request my occupational therapist to do a preliminary assessment and recommend for the child to be assessed by the psychologist." The very same parent did not come and assist. Now, when you say you are giving parents like that the responsibility to manage the school finances, it's disaster. My proposal will be actually for a composition whereby the head of department somehow will recommend sane minds in the department to somehow assist as far as the composition of S G B in schools for severely intellectually disabled as well as mild intellectual disability category. Let us not sell alcohol, but let us go to China and see what they are doing. We'll find factories there in schools that are encouraging learners in schools to do something positive, not to be drunkards. Thank you.
Are you supporting or not supporting the bill?
I would say like, Osi said that she's first seeing the bill today. I was hoping that because this is where we're gonna raise everything. I will have mine as big as the English one in my language. But no, it's just two pages. I can't even get anywhere. I'm against the bill for the following reasons and I'm not gonna point out sections and clauses. But I am against grade R being compulsory at schools. I was teaching eight years ago in a primary school. I once had sixty-seven grade R learners in a class. Just imagine, you can't even get to five kids a day if you have such a number. Who went to training basically for grade R at that time. I am against the language. If I can ask the ten of you who are sitting there, I'm sure all your kids... How are you going to get extra stuff that you are failing to get now for the schools? At schools, we are talking about nine to thousand kids. How are you going, for example, maybe there are four homeschoolers in one street. How are you going to get personnel that will do home visits or a competent assessor to go and address four families per street who are doing homeschooling? Thank you.
I am the member of the REC in Ngakamudrimulama. I have few pointers that I would want to focus on, but after listening to deliberations to everyone here, I must just reserve them and just go to go and write actually. But I aim for the bill however, there's this one. It should not be, because when you are a leader like myself and you go to community members and you want to engage with them, you are the first person to be bashed because of dilosidinzinja. Because notachila on its own. I want to speak from my perspective, because I know what alcohol does to a person. You had to make sure you were out of yourself. Get this issue of homeschooling. I don't want to be misquoted, I'm being racist or anything.
Good afternoon to the parliament. My name is Pale Sabatubote from Goldry Secondary School. And I must say, it is never easy talking to a large crowd, so bear in mind, I may not entirely feel comfortable, but my aim is to voice out the opinions that I have. I support the bill, but with that being said, I'd like to disagree with clause eight of this bill and submit that it should therefore be dismissed. Clause eight, amendment to section A, which is held that provisions for conditions under which liquor may be possessed, consumed, or sold on school premises in regard to the new definition of drugs. Now, my first submission is... ...in school to adults which are mostly educators. It hinges with the education system, and mind you, school is a work of profession. As much as workers of this very same parliament, workers of the Department of Health Sector, etc. would not be allowed to drink alcohol or to have it in their possession. Why would we consider it to be a misconduct if it will be sensed... My apologies. Would it be considered to be misconduct on what sensible and morally correct grounds would we say that alcohol to be sold in school? Also, the teachers they are in local parentis of their learners at school. It is really not advisable that as much as Sasa states that it is a misconduct to illegally bring alcohol to school, why would we allow adults to purchase, consume, and possess alcohol at school? May we also consider the violent cases, rape cases, and murder cases that are influenced by alcohol? There are many ways to raise funds, and it is shameful that the National Assembly considered this to be a way of raising funds. Roots such as sports, arts, and culture, they extend the line of culture as well. That could be a way of raising funds. Section twenty-eight subsection two of the South African Constitution states that "A child's best interests are of paramount importance in matters regarding the child." And I'd like to believe that this amendment bill, it acts in the form of the best interest of the child. Now, it brings forth a question. Would we still consider eighteen years and above learners as children or adults who can purchase and consume alcohol in school? It says that it takes a village to raise a child. This clause, it is not in line with section twenty-eight as this measures that are not in the best interest of the child. Also, my last request is that if this Bella bill is followed through, may we please focus on the implementation in ensuring that every person who is part of the education system is well aware of this bill and what provisions are contained in it. Lack of knowledge and education, may I please say my last sentence? It limits a citizen's right to make use and exhaust the rights that are provided in the South African Constitution. Thank you.
Are you supporting or not supporting the bill? You're supporting, okay. Thank you. Can I note this side, and I'm going to start. There at the back, orange one, two, yellow. Three at the back, blue. Four, black and white. Five, striped. As I note, you please stand up. Six, white with a paper. Seven, red and black. Eight, floral. Nine, blue shirt. Ten, striped with a laptop or a diary book. I'm coming. I'm gonna come. Yeah, I said you must sit where you were sitting, so if you're gonna move, you might end up not speaking. Just sit where you are and be patient. We're gonna come to you. Black people too.
I support the amendment of this bill. Home education, let's not debate about it. If you register, it is going to be better because the Department of Education can have a trace of that home education that you are doing and will give you the direction of what to teach a learner at home. Not to teach him racism, not to teach him how to rape. That's not fair, Mokorod. Because of this, we should register and be taught at home. Alcohol. The people who amended this. You are the one who's responsible to put alcohol in this paper. Do you like us being drank? Do you like us being chased by a car because of our drunkenness? Let's not joke about this thing. This thing is very important. It's killing our society as we speak. Alcohol. I don't want to talk about the drugs, I don't want to talk about, but alcohol is very dangerous. I thank you.
Translation?
We as black people have been a part of apartheid and went to school for ten years while others have the opportunity to be homeschooled and join us midway in metric. That is not fair.
Interpreter? Let's interpret as they speak, right? He did say he supports. You omitted that. So when we translate, remember, what people are interested in is support or not. So translate everything, my sister.
My apologies, Chair. He mentioned that he supports when he started speaking in English, so I only translated this one apart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Community licensing officer, officer, speaker. SGB high school, Yamaruapula. Position one, Yamakamudrimulama. I'm a grade 12. Yes. Kajana Wari had results in Tewa as a grade 12. Nereinalde, deputy minister, communication, Komaruapula. I look at the results as a position one. Heart and Akomaruapula, Obonikor, Hakona, Internet. Hakona, Area, Network. About, as a piece, within three weeks, we will be back at Internet till today. And so, let's say, Mokorod, Lina Fela for Libuaka Alcohol. Lizo alcohol, eh, he had a map, but I do hold a hook on a gang. Or, hold a bar on a bar on a, Maata, who fit up, Roona, back on a, Baba. Liza, resuscitate, hold a hook on a gang. And then, I need to go back, or, Halle, some more, do a fitting. Le, 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 scoreless, Kalago, Co-Co-Co-Ground, do la, la, we're the empty promise. One, I gave a position three, Kamaruapula, I'm a grade 12. One, I got a lot of play, it's a weird, it's a weird, it's a hotel. He said, one, I get private college, you know, ha, grass face. Horor, that they, Ramapula, and I, I get, so, I, I, I. And I, 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 I.
Are you supporting the bill? All right, can we get translation?
My, my name is Miss Ijubelentiro.
Let us just listen, please.
I want to raise points relating to complaints of more so the government not fulfilling its promises. For example, the Minister of Education came to our high school, Yamaruapula, in, which came first in the district. Now, when the minister came to our school and it's performing well, she saw that there's no internet connection in our school. She promised that in three weeks' time, there will be Internet. Until today, there's still no Internet, and this happened when the metric results were published. So, we don't know where to find her. Three weeks have gone past many times, a long time ago, and she has not fulfilled that promise. Another thing that is very worrisome to us as parents, it's alcohol. It hurts parents a lot because now you're giving children more authority than us as parents. And this makes it difficult for us as parents to discipline our children. Then, for example, when I come back to this issue of non-fulfillment of promises. My child was number three, was in position three at the school. My child was promised to have space in tertiary education, but I had to send my child to a private college because there was no space. Yet, you could see that that promise was never fulfilled. So, my main complaint is the non-fulfillment of promises.
My name is Patrick Direko. My name is Patrick Direko. I'm in the regional structure of Ngakamudrimulama. Even a word committee of Word eight at Munziwa. So, my view is, yeah, in the schools, there's bullying and there's no safety at the schools. The thing is, the children where they're at the schools, they are not safe. But what can the Department of Education do to the schools? There must be a monitoring always, and there must be also... Normally, at schools, when we grow up, there were inspectors to go to schools and policies go to search our bags. By these days, there are no more. So, let the Department of Education put more effort in everything they do. And I do not support anything concerning, anything about what is written in the bill.
Neoma Bote, DAPR councillor in the Maiki Local Municipality. On behalf of the DA, I strongly reject this bill. I have the audacity to believe that local communities know the needs of their local schools better than politicians nor government authorities who from the comfort of their office desks make decisions affecting our daily lives. The introduction of the Bella bill undermines communities and also seeks to centralize power in the education departments. This Bella bill will deprive SGBs of their powers to make decisions about language and admission policies for their schools. This Bella bill will be used as a scapegoat to target mother tongue education. Chair, learners have a constitutional right to mother tongue education, and the Constitution protects the right to mother tongue education where this is reasonably practicable. We need to strongly defend and seek to extend that right where parents wish to exercise it. The Bella bill gives the department the opportunity to abuse its powers and to discriminate against learners and to undermine their right to mother tongue education. Furthermore, Chair, it cannot be correct that school governing bodies are forced to appeal to heads of department against unfair or damaging policies imposed upon schools by the very same heads of department. imposed upon schools by the very same heads of departments. Chair, we are living in a fourth industrial revolution, and therefore we need to speed up with time. It is depressing that this Bella Bill does not cater for homeschooling, online, and blended learning. The Bella Bill- The Bella Bill, Chair, does not regulate online and blended learning. Since the COVID nineteen lockdown, this type of learnings has become popular and should have been incorporated in this bill. Chair, the Bella Bill ignores the real issues in our schools. It there's no resolutions that will solve the following problems: lack of resources regarding teachers, classrooms, school libraries, laboratories, I C T infrastructure, and many more. There are many schools that still have pit latrines, mad classrooms, dilapidated buildings, asbestos roofs, and no water at all. Poor quality teachers. Teachers are not qualified to teach their subjects, Chair. Lastly, the dropouts, the level of dropouts in our schools. These issues are not catered for in this Bella Bill, Chair. Chair, the Bella Bill will rob communities of their constitutional right to be involved and make decisions pertaining to their children's education. This must not be allowed at all. Once again, Chair, I reject this bill. Thank you.
Uh, dumelang. Good afternoon, hui amera, ni macheron, and, and, and. Uh, linalaka ki Joyce Madbena, a pensioner from government in good standing. Little, little, whatever you want to put in there, the good, in good standing. Um, ki emifa ka linala bossa, ki che person yanka mudirimolema, ko bossa. Bossa better known as Patia Msimaima. Mara janu, yanu yana, ki bua yaka motzadi. Motzadi ona li, a student ya computer science, koi malakini koi T U T. Li musitana owa, owa, oira, fetiye, samue ko vuselela, wa a, an a student. Baba rutile, ngenaka mulapen, deswa kere na, ami parent of good, in good standing. I am not agreeing with this bill, I reject that. Kamaba kama fin. Relapisitaki, puso hosena batla, kuchacha mula, uh, the, 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 the home institution. But lisana kama lapen, chachacha mula, lila apa. Haki, haki, haki ba teli, lisana, lili, wani lili ring, likha, lichakala, in any bill, ena li, something to do with school. What is the, the word likha doing in a bill, ena li, banabas schoolo kama kar? Something is telling me, hori. Ho, kone kubiwa kote, ronarero bez. Hatile, uh, hotrotoa tender. Yadi chalete se, dinsinti se kana. Yeri sambu jalwa, or edirambu jalwa. And somebody is eyeing that tender. That is why already sita yira la marketing, kokai koskolon. Yaka didire marketing for our school, for, for, for drugs, kodi kolon for banabarona. Koke langhu, blala kabo jalwa, lebanam, wana waskolo biala. Where does it fit in? Blala kaka grown-up stuff, prepare our children for the grown-up world and leave liquor out of it. Ki try sheba tender e, hori kri le, ki man, ya S A B C, mo harharu na ba, 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 ka uli. Lisati lili, you are aiming to get that tender ya wu jalwa, that's why sita lobo rekseta banabarona koskolon. Banabarona kabo rekseta wu jalwa koskolon, ni bilele mutokuha schoolo, no. As long as you pillar otherwise, hadi, di high blood, and, and, di kampula, mari, you are not going to sell liquor at schools. I reject the bills. Lidi lo yana, to snack, se di, emimo, se di, zana mo harharba, zadi leban. Koke langbanabacholo, lebatu, unamudi tugenze, linsimolo, sonate, and the parliamentarians sita- The parliamentarians sita bakolu, go on pension, I went on pension when I was fifty-eight years old. What are you doing at seventy-four in parliament, that's why le felleti le kemanu, addi bill. Thank you.
Translation? Translate, uh, let us, let us just, uh, listen to the translation.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I would like to say that I'm a parent in good standing in your life. You can make your own assertion, uh, assertion on what does, what does that mean. But the reason that I'm saying that is because I've got two children who've gone to uni-, uh, to tertiary education, and one of them, uh, is an A-plus student at Vusalela. So, and they all went to homeschooling, so I taught them, um, I taught them myself, uh, in the, in the homeschooling arrangement. Hence, I'm saying that I'm a parent of good standing. Now, I'm tired of you government, uh, always, uh, trying to destroy the homeschooling, uh, system and also trying to invade the privacy of our homes and the peace and the things that are working well in our home. So your, your disturbance, uh, hinders our children. Now, one thing that, um, I hate to see, it is the word alcohol coinciding with school and this bill. Now, probably there's a tender or someone who's eyeing a tender, maybe there's been some deliberations whilst we did not know, uh, regarding a, an alcohol tender. Hence, you are pushing for alcohol to be sold, uh, at schools. Um, now, I want to see who's got this tender amongst you because it, it's surprising that you put such a thing, um, in, in the bill, whereas you're talking about our children. Now, I want you to talk about grown-up things that will help our children have a better future. And please, consider taking, uh, pension. I retired when I was fifty-eight years old. Now, this issue of having seventy-four-year-old parliamentarians, who doesn't, who do not want to take, uh, uh, retirement or pension, probably is because they're eyeing for, for, for such tenders and intervening in the bills that will hinder our children's, um, progress. So our children are supposed to be where you, you are sitting. So please, consider taking pension like I did, so that our, our children can, can have a better future.
Dumelang. Um, mudlo se chilo kya ro dumedi sa. Ki emija, aja kama motzadi, yo chunyehilie. Uh, ke thohako ya se chava. Thohako ya mo rafi, le kromkolo lo ya mo Africa, haobuakan nota. Be kikale, ochwe, pekika manga, bana le basadi, ba ipatakan nota. Aba duza di lo, di lo, di lo, di di lo motzeli. Jana ki ipota ho, ha, wea ho dumala na kabojalwa, kwa di kolon. Totabu libiseka. Ke cheba ho, koro, mo tuyo na naha naka, molauana o. Ochwanitawa na iti. Akona katsela, ep, e, wea ho dumala na, lebajalwa koskolon, wii, tisesi dira kalanza kodi kolon, kumpie. Ba utava na ba kopa fa. Banabadi koloba feela, haobota le baka nota. Di witiwazi. Me ki tumela tata, kore, ronali chunu e, ya kama motzadi. O shukule, inke kaguluana ya mo lauabulthano, oguankadi ti. Minna keli se hokoa, wa kangoana, osantea aliteng. Baba ntsi rabana bana, kantating ya kotrevo. Bapa loa ki kuisa bana kodi kolon zabo. Kanta te amola uana o, wa di pu. Yani ki tumela tata, kore, se bakasebse koro kilosa ho. Uh, pushu ebono koro maleba, baba, baba na li, di chelete, baba na le ma. Badu samola o, ho, wipata. Ke lo le tata le, le pushu aboko, bu piwima, ke lo ela, hosinyango na me, moskolo seki di lo motokuha shon. Kore ya ki bualo enaya na, kana li fifty years. Wana kio na li eight years. Otrevo la sixty kilometers every day. Ke ipota ho, haleza zili piwima, outa ho, kapunzi yoba na baba. Ba felezi munziling, ba iloko ba ta, tuwe botoka. Ke sapota molauo, tata, ke lebukile tata pushu abu na o, ibikilemo, uh, into their senses. Thank you very much. I support the bill.
Greetings, everyone. I stand here before you as a concerned parent. Firstly, I believe it is an insult to Africans when we speak about alcohol. I wonder what we want to achieve when we talk about alcohol in our children and in our schools. I believe the person who put this point had probably had alcohol themselves. Our children, uh, pardon, our people are struggling because of these substances. So I do not understand why the issue of alcohol is being mentioned. The other issue is of languages. I believe that, uh, our children are suppressed because of these languages and are deprived the ability to learn. I believe that those who are privileged use this law to protect themselves. For some of us, we are unable to take our children to other schools. I have tried for many years to try to cha-, to take my children to a better schools, but I have been struggling, so I support this bill. Thank you.
If a child cannot learn in the way we teach, then we must teach in a way a child can learn. Good afternoon. Bodani Sanbonani. Kumbili solutetai. I support the bill interalia. Amendment of Section Three Subsection One of Act eighty-four of nineteen ninety-six. Attendance to school is compulsory from grade R, not grade one. Learning is a process without end point. Amendment of Section Eight A. Leo itetan, goktwa la, okanyo impato ya, goktwa la, umabile banda. Into mbikanoldisanga, pakati kwe scolo. Yona anti kasi, inga, inga ngotuwa, iti nywe. Goba, kasi jonga ku, Act eighty-four of nineteen ninety-six. Seduced guidelines, Section Four, subsection four point six. Learners have the right to save and clean environment. Gokutasi zaupata, into mbikanoldisu, umabile banda, ngapakati kwe scolo. Si kutengisela, abadala, yinga kioto. Umabile banda, apu akitekona, kushaka kuyinga ki, nobutlo bonkeela. Umzali au kaita kumabile banda. Unentukiso ayenza, yu ya tukisa, abantuana belapa. Itikasa, abantuana bangapula, puli ngapakati kwe kumbalu, kumbilo kundela. Ba bebe kringe ezi, azitukileza isolo. Ubuiseka no bonvu, ebeteukise city. Uiseka no bonvu, ebeka taseela, wa wa watini. Uwezintuku si petene ne, ngaki zabantuana. Masinga komin ngaki, pesku ngaki. Leo eyo twa la, mai kri nywe, engosi.
Translation?
I guess, um, the first part was in English, but, um, um, I am Billy So. The part of the bill that is talking about the alcohol, please, please take it out, erase it. If you're going to sell alcohol, that is a problem. We are putting the problem on top of the problem. If the parents use alcohol today, the children saw that. Now, the children cannot imitate the good example. Tomorrow, they cannot listen because the, the parent was drunk. So if now you give the child the alcohol straight, that means you are creating a problem. And children cannot learn at our schools if the alcohol is there present. Please, I don't support that part.
But you do support the bill. That's what you said, I may pause.
Yes, you do support it.
At least that language, I may straight A into it. That one only. Um, next.
Tagi dumedi se, leadershipi helete, lewotzadi bu helete. Oh, tagi dumedi se, leadershipi helete, lewotzadi di helete, bu helete. Le ma studentaka helete, di di learneraka di helete. Let me introduce myself, kena mamukupi seni, maka ke hou shubelwe. Ke tsako wotweni one, ko, wotingi mo yana, yakare meyara, councila tepison peto. Rona, uwetingi yana, ronarudumela tata motuto. So I'm going to ask, uh, one of the parliament members, Simo, Hori. Agiri, rebuaka iski alcoholo no yana. Hori, ako kabineteng. Before le tse na kahali, raho nantere rebo, order. Sustained, order, sustained. Akona le baranya na kahali, kibata risimule tengela ha. Iteng. No, akona koro kathuli kijwela. And then, ki ipoza san, se se we, risimoteka, le taka ya alcoholo, mobaning, le kodi kolon, Hori. Whether it's, it's fundraising or what, haki ba tukit. Uh, emwe, kamo sho, halisimula le, lisina alcoholo kodi kolon, kamo sho. Yahu na i, Hori no, karabunari, teenage pregnancy, imo, imo fechene, elonroona, youth yano yana, de graduate, retra ya ho, builda bana, rta ho, motivate da bana, hori. Ba di le doze dinsinsen, le kamo sho. Ridlo hori, no, araba tukeling, reba, ah, heleni bekrumu kodi kolon ke, banne le bana free. Like, um, kipakori, next time, hari loko parlamenteng, haki nyata opi, you like ba tukonyata, eh, bo ra parlamenta, le bo ma parlamenta, barona. Into di my councila meyara tepison peto, wa itu ri mo to respectantat. Haki banyazi, haki nyata opi, ki ra, hela hori, next time, heri kwa la di lo. Very ikutu, hara, haki lele nesai ikutu, ki ayituklini ni ikutu. So no yana, let me go straight to my point, ekemihaka yone. As I said, I'm the member of the L G B T I Q plus. Yes, and a member of the E N C in good standing, and a youth coordinator. Eh, ge zena morione, ge los tu, ne? Ya section three. Hey, ya section seven. Ish, yare. Le twerefo yare, any person who unlawfully and intentionally interrupts, disturb, or hinder any school activity, or hinder, or obstruct any school in the performance of the school activities is guilty of the offense and liable or convicted to a fine or to imprisonment for a period not exceeding twelve months.
Your time is up.
Yes. Time is up.
Yes.
Um, mele.
Are you supporting or not supporting the bill? Are you supporting the bill?
I can't support, eh, haki ba di, kamo shakiri, kamo shokutla bekuti.
Are you supporting or not supporting the bill? Are you supporting or not supporting the bill?
I can support karo unka oze.
Thank you.
I don't support.
Thank you. Translation?
Um, I, I'm not supporting the bill because you cut me off. Alright, um, I, I'm Miss, eh, Hakausubeli, and in our ward, I come from the same ward as the executive mayor, um, of, of this city. Now, we believe in education, and I want to ask you members that before going to the chamber, to the National Assembly Chamber, where you're going to debate issues, uh, saying point of order, sustained, and so on. I want to know, before you go in there, do you pass by the bar first? In other words, is there a bar, uh, in parliament before going to the chamber? Uh, I don't want to undermine anyone, but really, bringing alcohol to kids for fundraising or for whatever, it, it doesn't make sense, and it's an absolute no. Uh, because now I'm asking myself, if you are considering alcohol to be sold, uh, in school premises, what is next? Uh, with, uh, teen, teenage pregnancy being rev-, uh, being so high and escalating. Uh, now, it seems like you'd be considering building bedrooms so that you, you can con-, uh, co-condom, uh, the, the, the children to, uh, to fall pregnant while they're still in school. So I'm asking myself, is there any sense in, 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 in this, uh, part of alcohol that has been brought into the bill? Now, as I mentioned-
of things in the schools whereby parents cannot be able to participate in or to pay for due to their disadvantage. And then another thing that I just want to mention, which is not included in the bill, but it is very close to my heart, is related to albinism. So I'd like to plead with the government to please help us in all aspects, including you, the education department. It shouldn't be just certain departments that are of help to people living with albinism. For example, a child who's living with albinism should be helped to have equipment that he or she can use to read and write because of the disadvantage that they have due to albinism. And also teachers who are living with albinism to be helped and to be equipped to teach comfortably in their space whereby they also have a disadvantage of living with albinism.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Mutraping, a principal of Yusef Tadu. I will start by saying that wholeheartedly I support the bill. And my support is based on the following: it pains me to realize that when you check section 8A, good parents and members who are here, we fail to understand and read what is there. And I'll read the amendments that I intended. Number, subsection 1, paragraph A says... Now let me go to B. No person may bring alcohol into public school premises. I wonder what is... Why is this noise? When the section is saying no person must bring alcohol, I don't know what is the interpretation of "no"? I'll go further, because it seems as if our good parents did not read what is contained or have liquor in his possession or her possession to consume or sell. No, no person. Now what is it that we are making noise about? Because the intended amendment says "no", but we are talking as if the amendment is saying we should say. It says "no". Why are you making noise? During a public activity, this goes further. You know, good people, you must understand, as educators, there is always this at the end of the year, we go to year-end function. The law says here, even during those year-end functions, there should not be liquor for educators. It's not about only children. Why are you so focused on this one element, not considering what the law is saying? Unfortunately, it shows that we are failing as educators to teach our parents the right thing, to interpret the law correctly. I've shared this document with my community last year, in 2022. I shared this with them because it was with us two, three years ago, if you are not aware. I'm talking to those who are so making a noise about as if their intention is to bring liquor to school. No! Their intention is to... Secondly, I understand, my time is up. Home teaching is an insult to us as professionals. People are saying here, "We..."
Your time is up.
Thank you very much, but people must know, we are professionals.
No! Yes.
Good day. My name is Lauren Eled and I'm home, and I'm homeschooling my children. I don't support the clause of the, clause 37 of the Bella Bella Bill. I have many objections to the clause, but due to limited time, I'm going to focus on annual assessments, which home-educated children will be required to take. But first, I want to address the object, the previous objections against homeschool. First of all, it is not a matter of discrimination. Every parent should have the right to choose to homeschool or not. Regardless of economic or racial standing, it is not for the elite few. Also, no homeschool parent I know teaches their child to be a racist. I personally teach my children that all people are made in the image of God and should respect and that they should respect all children regardless of color and race. My children have very good friends that are black, that are colored, that are Indian, that are Asian and are white. It is not, also, you should also, one should also know that it is not, that the apartheid government banned homeschool education. This is not a racist issue, but this is an issue about the well-being and growth of all children. Also, people who want to make objections against homeschool should educate themselves before making objections against it. If a parent is fit to parent their child, they are fit to educate them. Also, regarding to the previous statements about it being a disgrace to qualify, to the profession of education, I want to state that I am a qualified teacher. I received my BA degree from the University of Pretoria. I have a registered SACE number. I have 10 years' school teaching experience in foundation and intermediate phase in South Africa under the OBE and CAP system. I have also taught internationally in an American Common International School in Thailand under the American Common Core and in a Swiss-German school in Thailand, which combines both Swiss and German educational systems. I began to research homeschool in depth because I became concerned with the unnecessary pressure put on young children, the overemphasis of standardized testing, which causes children not only to learn, to only learn for tests and to regurgitate answers that they soon forget. The amount of children who have learning problems, conflicting values that my children would learn. I was also concerned by the fact that many South African schools are not on the same standard as international standards, by the big, by the big sizes of classes, which make it very hard for individual attention, bullying, violence in schools. We know that all children develop at different rates. Educational specialists Raymond and Dorothy Moore have done extensive research on how forced early formal academics can cause many problems such as apathy towards learning, dyslexia, ADD, and ADHD, eye problems, and more. They say in order to prevent this formal instruction, should wait until the child is developmentally ready, which is different for every child, for a child, and can be anything between eight to 12 years. These children are learning, they are just learning differently, at a different pace and different skills.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Greetings. I thank you for this opportunity. I'm here on behalf of ACDP. We as ACDP, we reject the Bella Bill. We are opposed to the bill and in particular clause 37 that amends section 51. This is the section on homeschooling. When the DBE imposed comprehensive sexuality education and scripted lesson plans on schools, DBE spokesperson Elijah Mshanga stated in the press that the only way parents could opt out of the new CSE lesson in is by sending their child to private school or homeschooling them. Parents then took children out of school to homeschooling them, but now the DBE wants to force the CAPS curriculum on homeschooling. Section 51, subsection 2 states that the home education program must cover the acquisition of contact and skills at least comparable to CAPS and that the learner must be assessed against the national curriculum statement. If a child does not do CSE, they cannot be evaluated against the CAPS curriculum. This clause will mean at home, that homeschoolers can not protect their children from the state CSE program. The Bella Bill is being used to force learners to do CSE. I ask that this clause is be removed and that new clause be added that protect a parent's right to choose a curriculum of their choice and to have their children assessed against the curriculum they have chosen and not the CAPS curriculum. We are also opposed section 51, subsection 16, which gives the minister power to make regulations relating to the registration and administration of home education. This will allow her to make regulations and this will allow her to impose CSE on homeschoolers and limit the rights of homeschoolers in other ways. Parliament must keep these powers for itself and not give the minister the power to make new regulations. Many small Christians and religion schools have been started to allow learners to receive an education. That is an agreement with their families' values. These small schools struggle to register as they cannot meet the same requirements of big independent schools. Clause 35 amending section 46, increase the penalty for running such a school to 12 months in jail. This is unfair when small schools struggle to register. We call for the Bella Bill to be amended to provide for the registration of small schools by the provinces. I thank you. I'm from Dizobota.
Okay, thank you. Let me come to this side now. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Everyone is going to speak. Go to the chairs if we have noted you. If we did not note you, don't go to the chairs. Your turn is coming. If I did not point you, don't go to the chairs. Nicely so, your turn will come. Let us try to be... Let us try to be... I don't know how to call it. I don't want to use the word that is in my mind now. But if I did not point you, please don't go to the chairs. All right?
My name is Eva Brace and I'm 13 years old. I oppose the bill, especially clause 37. I have been educated since the day I was born. My parents have classically educated me, which gives me the ability to learn skills that schools don't focus on. We have joined a classical community and I am in a peer group with 10 other students from different cultures that are my age. Once a week, we meet together to practice Latin, logic, mathematics, research, exposition, debate, and debate. I take tests on some of these subjects such as math. However, we do assessment differently. My mother sits next to me and watches, explains, and helps me with things that I'm struggling with. My mother explains how something works until I understand it, whereas a teacher in a school cannot explain to every individual child. My parents can watch me and know exactly what I do not understand yet, what I do not understand yet, and what I have mastered in my education. Home education in our household is not just about schoolwork, but also about life skills such as today, God's Word and virtues. Many schools do not have this and many children will have questions about life and creation. Through the Word of God, I am able to understand His creation and my place in it. And it is all, and it's all the thanks to my parents who love me and know what's best for me. Please do not limit our right to home education. Thank you.
Next.
I'm a retired nurse. I think it's 1998. I was a teenage education. I was a teenager. My father was a teenager. I 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 was pregnant. I was pregnant. I was a teenager at the age of 12. I was an abortion. I think it's 19 something. I was a teenager. I was a teenager. I was a teenager at the age of 12. I was a teenager. 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 You are still growing. I was a teenager. I was a teenager. I was a teenager. I was a hospital. I was a hospital. I was a hospital. I was a teenager. 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 I was a teenager.
Your time is up.
Thank you. I was a teenager. Especially when I was a teenager. No, I was a teenager. I was a teenager. Thank you.
Greetings.
I was a supporter. But I was a supporter. The rest was a supporter. Sorry.
All right, ma'am.
Greetings. I, as a retired nurse, I would like to indicate that I partially support, as I have not read, I have not read the whole bill. I have worked with children in family planning and later realized that this, this education is not suitable for children but for adults. I would like to propose that children should be taught teenage education instead and including the use of alcohol and abstinence. We want to only talk about teenage education after the child becomes pregnant and then introduce or teach them about abortion. At the age of 12, why, how does a child know, what does a child know about handling abortion? I once saw on TV a woman promoting abortion to 12-year-old children. How, yes, if a child has an abortion, if a 12-year-old child has an abortion, how can a body, a tiny body handle such without parents being, without the knowledge of the parents? Can we teach our children about teenage education instead so that they know what the body can handle? I support this bill, but I do not support having the education of abortion and also alcohol. Partially.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Let me just correct her. She said that she cannot support something that she doesn't know or have heard or read. But when it comes to the issue of alcohol and teenage pregnancy, it's a total no. But I'm going to read the bill, but I cannot support something that I don't know.
Okay. You can proceed, ma'am.
Before anything else, I just want to say that I support Bella Bella, Billa Bill. I support the Billa Bill, but there are two clauses that I don't support. The first one, clause number 40, 40. I said it was 2 years. It's a 10-year CP. I said it was 10 years. I said it was 10 years. I declared my financial interests. I declared my financial interests. We want to see that in writing where the head of department declares the financial interests somewhere, then we are talking. So I must declare my financial interest to the head of department and I must also declare the financial interest of my spouses to the head of department. I wonder. I was a head of department, please. I'm also the deputy secretary of the SGB, the remuneration of the SGB. You know this ladies and gentlemen, they're doing a lot. Mama, I'm a teacher at Afisana Primary School in Sineshof. First of all, first of, first and foremost, I want to say that I support the Bella Bill, but there are two clauses that I do not support. Clause number 40 is the first one, that talks about that teachers should not, according to this Employment Equity Act, that the teachers should not be involved in businesses that are in relation to, to government or that coincide with government. Now, it is a problem because for two years, we have not received an increase, an increment in our salaries. Now, allow us to have businesses so that we can be able to put food on the table and have, create a better future for our children. Now, the second clause that I, I do not support, it is clause number 41, where it talks about us as educators, that we should declare financial interest to the HOD. Now, my question is, where does the HOD declare his or her financial interest? And what's bothering me is that it is not only my financial interest that I have to declare, but also of my spouse. So what were you thinking when you drafted this bill, this part? So what I'm, what I'm asking is that please leave my pockets, leave my money and my, and my accounts and because we have nothing, we have little, so leave us with our little money that we have. And then the other thing that I, that I really like with the bill, it is in relation to remunerating the SGB because they work really hard and they deserve it.
Translation? Let me take this opportunity to introduce myself. I am Stephen Yankees. I support this bill, but I disagree with the point of selling alcohol in schools. When you put this point in motion, did you, were you considering? Are you promoting bashes on Fridays in schools? I have, I think you are promoting attendance and you want us to support you while you forget that we are the ones who put you in place. You want, you expect results from us, but you want to introduce alcohol in schools. Where I work, there is no stationary, but you want to bring alcohol instead. I am disappointed. I know that I drink alcohol and you constantly remind us not to drink alcohol while driving. Instead, you want to bring alcohol in schools. I am disappointed.
Thanks. Am I ordered? No, thank you.
thanks eh am I order no thank you for reasons known by my parents I am Dikaho my surname is Bulleye my first name is Teve I have no colonial name I'm from Tswai I was going to present my credentials academic credentials but I realized it's not an obisual cause someone came here and said he's from UP international who are also graduate of UP masters by the way but it's fine we'll come to it eh thanks eh Che my issue is that I support but on alcohol of course all of us we agree that it's not consistent with what the people want eh of course the problems that we are having here today is the language police we must agree as government that English must be the medium of instruction for all of us black and white Indian no colors must be an agreement because of this white private schools let me tell you what they do that is why some of your cry that your children's are not taking the D O and T Q because of the rating a test called aptitude test and in that test when they read it in the university's decollet not a benchmark test in order for them to accept your children they want to accept them and based on the language they use to answer that particular test so they are providing two question papers eh but also you must stop to take your children's from this African school and come here and cry it's wrong and on language we must start to teach with our African languages you know in physics eh we've got four chapters eh you've got momentum gas to anake mark you've got energy gas to anake mark you've got power gas to anake mark you've got force gas to anake mark so also we must make sure that we improve our languages so that they fit on the curriculum of course what we must do again we must change curriculum content of the school what we teach our children in in Germany they've got a subject called mining yet they don't have mines so where they're coming from we must have a subject called mining a subject called business a subject called farming that is what we must do this things of studying head of locast what are you doing to do get taught here and so to go to the H A G what are you going to do anything with those things but the last issue is that the quintiles quintile one to four of course de tifa but I was a machine is that of course eh we must do away of this eh paying at school because if the government are going to support that yes this is my last issue I assure you eh they must make sure that they don't subsidize these private schools because of you can eh give people money yet they tell you that they are private they operate on their own I will not support such such a thing but thank you even though I reject issue was not noted but I had to speak thanks
so it's you who finished this chairs next
okay no thank you thank you program director eh my name is Moses Siwanda eh I'm also from Tswai Sanisov eh I support the bill I do support the bill but I want to touch only on these two aspects of admission and language policy eh I'll be proud to show I'm working as an administration assistant at Refituto Primary School on issue of admission we are having a challenge whereby there are learners or children from neighboring countries without identity documents we call those learners undocumented learners we admit them from primary school they will move grade by grade but the problem arise when they they reach to high school whereby they live to register for grade twelve that's where the problem comes eh I will ask from our committee go and sit down and try to address this issue that will help us from primary school so that this learner when he reached grade twelve wa na akwale ateni sekolo akwale a pass because it's very frustrating hori wa na register eh at the same time or tashtragila ka register akam tanta bale ota asokala kabelika register then the other issue on language policy eh I want to concentrate on this one sign language can you please assist us in public schools sign language it's a ne idrisi weko di public schoolu re nalibon na kabarona baba sa honu kubu baba sa honu kudira seb but wa na wi o emi kaka tete oh wa na kota na leboni bali baba di ranso wale siwi the only thing koreng ah honu kubu let us make a provision for those learners resale tare ina kereba la kela mato batele kudi kolo nza ro then the last issue issue ya SGB eh when coming to issue ya koreng we must eh not the SGB let me go back to that eh the language no admission yeah the admission eh we are having a very serious problem kay issue admission ota vota wa na wa ma register kuwa eh neighborous school actually like a next door whereby that school itabamebe di Afrika so English then olemo tadi there'll be that time mo ho ro kote school fi stile kudi the principal will tell you that we must apply for exemption hori wa ni si da hapatalo rapatalo or ta patala ho yakade kase lo saka but inalidin zanantani wa na wi lo kota nasikolo wi lo ba arto kolo kete di zanantani or tanta ba toralas esna ino ra di ring atameka sport atameka in thank you
um some of the issues that I would like to attend to um it is mostly with the um the children who have immigrated to this land and they're undocumented now the problem is that they will be included and processed into a classroom from from primary school but now the problem becomes evident when they have or when they come to metric and they have to register to write their final exams and they are undocumented so I think that it will be important that their registration issues should be addressed while they're still at an early stage because it's also frustrating for a child to try to register and then learn and expect that he or she will do well in school and pass metric so this is a matter of concern that should be attended to another thing that um I want to submit it is that South African sign language must be introduced in schools because it is a disadvantage it is a disadvantage for a deaf child who's talented who can do things with his or her peers um that they cannot progress well at school because there's no South African sign language so this matter should be looked into and be implemented uh in into the system and then another thing that I wanted to mention is in relation to admission you take a child to a neighboring school maybe it's an English and African school but now due to the price increases of or the school fees increases it becomes difficult for us as parents who are disadvantaged now the the principal will will advise that such a parent to yeah to 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 ask for a grant in the in the school so that or a subsidy in the school but now there are many nitty gritty things that they have to go through and it becomes a challenge whereby now the child cannot focus in school knowing that there are financial problems thank you
du melamba holo du melamba holo ki vidua mamu lefale bile former council I am a local municipality before the executive mayor that empesh but I'm not here to to talk too much genali di issue fela zeta zake batang kubu akazon kenakere ki buze di parlamentaris taro na hori are you setting us for a failure are you setting us ro na the parents because hakibuikan nahel na I'm a politician I can talk I can defend myself but as a parent are you setting us for a failure one regretne bile today we didn't have a time to read it so that we prepare ourselves for the questions and comment but hakinteki redite but deliberating and everything I've got three issues one hatte bojalo kuskolo le bata vana barona ba feile because of banu ile bojalo two did you see the issue eh di rachezin konyo enyobe ko K Z N ko taverni now you want to turn di kolo taro na tava na barona hori innedi tave you know very well hori le seti le fe di zef is just a formality kudlisasose mo horo na re rabas tembe meanwhile you know that le fe di ite la hui implement hona is just a formality hori lelele ifiti le koho ro two ki bua ka safety and security ya bana barona kodi kolo including my teacher do you know hori even if konoko satwi bojalo kuskolo di kolo tava na barona hadi safe haba safety at all kenzeke redise ba kolo ba buaka bullying now if vasti banu ile bojalo then haba hona hurbata mayega di tunya ba yekos kolo ibile kosa boni misipe hurbana bato ri di tunya or di tiba ore bakona kua tegama teacher e bakona kua tegama bana baba now haba ni le bojalo ya honai please ba holo ke kupar di lo se di muhalidi dira or li di kuala or li di ri li na hanele bata di baba wi baba tave mbasa na tati cvti sa koyema are no ya ka principal onza bua faro no no hara bata bojalo kuskolo two safety vana barona is crucial rekupa kuri horneli adopt instituted the program eteleka tanga tona kodi kolo horneli adopted cop kodi kolo horneli the social worker kodi kolo so that that team ibi fade the SGB hori social worker akona hule mo ha horo wa na wo ona le problem o tokaka kansi di ma podisa adopted cop ya scolo se okona kuri wa na wo aga tusi wa yan rather than reneli bana baba chering bali under age or bali banyani and justice system iberi wa na wo we cannot sentence her or him because of o under age kanti wa na wo ona adiwa ke pressure kuskolo or koha so social worker ke kupar fela nita bo fela ma please it's very it's very crucial ya admission ni kia ito kela i kahori ke abona hori kari it doesn't sit well hakibuaka yon
ah ah it's not about that ma but really we allow three minutes for each one ah ah which ones no don't do that
okay my apology ma ma ya bo fela ke admission we cannot redo ma
mama your time is up so let's try to work together your time is up you should have started with your issues then you come and lambast on us so you started the wrong way so your time is up really so can you please
eh 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 okay mama thanks I don't I don't I don't support this
thank you
greetings I am not here to say much I only have three points I would like to ask if you are setting us for failure and I am here speaking on behalf of the parents I we only received the bill today however we are expected to now have input on this so my three points will be as follows the first issue will be alcohol I heard that the first issue was alcohol in schools do you want our children to fail because of consumption of alcohol did you see the issue of enyobeni tavern do you want our children in schools to turn out the way the children in the tavern turned out the second issue is that of safety and security there is no safety and security in our schools for both our learners and teachers regardless of alcohol there are many issues such as bullying if we now add alcohol what will the case be the third point can you please consider other people who are not able to speak out when you introduce such points I would like to also suggest that there be programs introduced in schools such as adopt a child pardon adopt a cop where police officers would be there and social workers would be there who will help children and who will help to identify issues that children go through as some children react because of the pressures that they face at home the last point is of admission but it was not yes I mentioned so she does not support
no eh greetings mayor it is regrettable that you should have been treated the way you were eh greetings mayor we it is very regrettable that you should have been treated the way you were treated eh perhaps next time we host this important people greetings mayor it is regrettable that you should have been treated the way you were treated perhaps next time we host this important people you should bring your own staff to do the admin no Che we support the bill we are clear but as a teacher and a hundred thousand generation native South African perhaps I need to interpret particularly clause thirty seven for some of our compatriots who have spoken here and we are not blind we can see we can hear and can see the people who are so vocal about homeschooling this bill is not opposed to homeschooling this bill wants to regulate it we live in a state we must know what is happening if you are teaching your children at home we must know what is it that you want to hide what is it that you want to teach your children at home that you don't want the state to know about thank you very much
eh my name yes no thank you eh greetings to all eh my name is Tadi Sidikani from the National Association of School Governance Bodies in the Northwest eh the first no I just want to indicate that we support the bill but with the exceptions of the following number one eh maybe I can just give a background in terms of Northwest in terms of section twenty one one C the withdrawal of that allocated function it was never given to any school since from doing since from nineteen ninety four so when we talk about amending it now I'm not sure what are we amending because it was never given it was withheld from inception now we don't agree with that clause to say that the L T S M should be centralized we are saying the quality of all the items that are given to schools after that process of procurement has been done is a very poor quality and some of the items as we speak have never arrived to schools so we are saying why don't you give that function to the schools to do it themselves why lesava feona ba itireli because it is an allocated function to them as SGBs why are bata we centralize recolonize so NAGIB is saying bahaytu in terms of their submission are etoke len that L T S M fifty percent to schools section twenty two is protecting any mishaps to that allocated function to say the HOD has those powers if there is incapacity in all those processes of procurement so why lesava fe if we lo bapa lela then we can withdraw the function alatere buaga withdrawal but they were never given I not there if we are going to withdraw, but they were never giving it. Number two, uh, clause twenty three. If we are not, none, uh, remuneration of SGBs for the performance of their duties. So when I read that, that, uh, it says that even for attending meetings. The SGB members must not be remunerated. Are we saying that they should not be compensated for the, uh, commit, for their commitment to support schools? Le basutela bahayso. So, we are not supporting that, that bill. Uh, we are saying.
Your time is up.
We are saying that they should be remunerated, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Good day everyone. Um, I'm Tatsidi Homage from Matile Village, Itzavatla region. Uh, I'm here to submit on behalf of ACDP. This is a school abortion bill. This is a compressive sexuality education bill. This is a bill that could open the door to force girls to share toilets with boys. This is a bill that could have the DBE teaching children that humans were not created male and female. Many, many educators are against this and will fight against this. But this bill passes, but if this bill passes, they will not have a choice if they want to avoid jail. Already if they want to keep their jobs, they must teach what the DBE tells them, even if it goes against their beliefs. Now the minister wants to power, one, now the minister wants the power to make regulations that punish teachers. Parents and SGB members who don't implement the regulations with fines and jail sentence of up to six months. These regulations could force teachers to refer learners as young, as twelve for abortion and all forms of contraceptions. And compel them to keep their secret from parents. The second part of clause four one will give the minister power to punish those who refuse to follow her regulations with fines and jail. DBE will say this is not the minister's, the minister's intentions. We say, what about the next minister? What, what about if the minister changes her mind? Then will the minister's power to make regulations be taken away? It will not. The road to hell is paved with good intentions. We say if this is not abortion bill, if this is not C S E bill. If this is not a gender identity bill, then put what you want to make a law into the bill. And don't keep it a secret in regulations. Do not hide the truth from us. Show us and parliament what they are voting for and who we will be voting for in twenty twenty four. We say no to the Bala Bill, no to hidden regulations and not to jail time for believers. We say yes to transparency.
Uh, kaki du medise, modula stilo yo monkai, kaki du medise, sitchabase. Yo bua mo ka buku choyani bahayso, kisi po, sefa ne ke hadebe. Ke membera ya ACDP, is a P E C member, on North West. Na ka buku choyani ki rata kora ya ba rumi ba balintefah, koto ko parlamenti. Kore, we say no to this bill. Why we say no to this Bala Bill? We are going, we are only have two things that I want to clarify. Well, I am a president of South Africa. Because of what? Because of abortion. Number two, we say no to this Bala Bill as ACDP members. Because it does not allow a parent to teach a child, katsila yas Africa. Kamanzoba huwi mwanayo unelo mula, ki government or aga rutwa yam, teacher, opalwa ki uruta mwanawa kahwe, sela yas Africa. And African we have been taught, ubundu. Number two, we have taught to respect. This Bala Bill does not respect, thank you.
Um, in, in, in short, I want to say, I'm Mr. Sipo Kadebe. Well, in short, I want to say we, we are saying no to this bill. Um, and number one, why we say that? Point number one is in relation to, uh, the abortion that has been drafted. Because you don't know that that innocent child who's been aborted might be, might be a future president. So, in short, uh, like I said, it's one that, uh, by, by, by this law. You are mad at us because you are killing a, a future of our nation, like a future president or so. And then, um, the, the, the second thing that we are saying no to. It's more, uh, uh, with the government, um, dictating how the teacher must teach, uh, teach a child. Uh, because now that teacher won't have the opportunity to teach the children the African way, which is ubundu. Uh, and to have respect and discipline. So with this, uh, two points, hence we are saying no to this bill.
Uh, no, thanks comrade. Kidi medisa le ba ba koo di kaha jedi te, le society at large, kele bo kela lo opportunity dey feeling. Obua ngoe memopele kalo na kele chokonolo, mereminti. Uh, second city, second se ruti le, ki kore, mwanase jawa takane, it takes a village to raise a child. Uh, in that regard, agetlo huika ma kanya le admission criteria, le di polisi, language policy, te ndi di pihwai. Ke te la kore, uh, sa se ruti le, kore compulsory attendance should be compulsory to everyone. Uh, ba, ba shabaruna, le ba na baruna haba grade opportunity telele kani. Because of the language policies, na ke bona ele gatekeeping, ele barrier, ele red tape, yagotu eleta, sebasu eleta. Yabo be, eh ma, eh amanalo nea admission criteria, le language police. Kidi quintile, uh, renali di golo te ndi. Especially harakama mafiki, harakama ngaka modere mola, ma ra ito predominantly, redulamo, separate gene, le more gene ning, enali, mete mahai kabunti. Ra safari from, eh, scholar transporto, ra safari from L T S M, ra safari from the challenge, le di opportunity, se ba na ba ba di kriyan. Kudi quintile ndi, we, from private sector, from, eh, Muslim schools and from other schools, according to the way to classify, you can get quintile. So, ke ko pa kore, kanya di quintile revisiti, when revisiti weka, eh, soul, people, siya kore. Di quintile, kele di prioritize weka, kore skolo senali infrastructure, ife, le skolo safo re. Eh, le kanya di quintile, e kala ne make sure kore skolo se receive back, according to how revisiti le skolo se, le, rukonoko na kora me. Koto ke wa, eh, budget, tebo ka koskolo se. Harato we allocate daella because of skolo se, ke maltrition school or ke, eh, Muslim school or ke, kolo te longore, hadi kono. Feed a more priority criteria yaro. Eh, yabo halo, ba kolo, ke L T S M, ke na la ba ta ta bo bunzi, molenati just support material. Uh, from COSAS, I'm, I'm a former leader of COSAS. From COSAS, kala ne se priority sa one lena one tablet. Harakana, sirase da rabota kore, ame, is it cheaper? Kore, kadi textbook utse te ti, oh, is it cheaper just to buy one tablet and load PDF motif? So that, kosta lo kona lewa no share a textbook, lewa no mungu. Kosta lo kona le problem, a kora katta, a kona eh eh eh, L T S M, kosi kolo, kore aravi lele, idorma, tata, a, 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 a. Ke, ke, supply chain, a, a, me, yango department of education. So, ke ko pa kore, at least revisiter, eh, and rebela kohona, rebua neto kore, ame L T S M. Especially Rapocha, Fourth Industrial Revolution, Rapocha, Asia AI. Ame ba na ba kamele ba deprive you with technology, kudi koli.
Time is up. Are you supporting the bill? Are you supporting the bill or not?
I'm not supporting the bill, it must have widespread consultation with people who are actually a safari.
Translation?
Greetings to chair and the community at large. My name is Lichonolo Mereminti. What I know is that it takes a village to raise a child. I will not say much, but to just mention compulsory attendance. Um, language barriers will be a hindrance for children to attend. And we need compulsory attendance. Language bodies go with quantiles based on regio, regions in our rural areas. We need support in terms of other facilities such as transport. And as, as, as we are classified based on quantiles, such are not able to be met. May the quantiles be reviewed according to the evaluation in schools and the needs of each school. And not based on any other criteria. The last thing is the L T S M. As a former member of COSAS, we introduced and supported one lena one tablet. As we are living in the Fourth Industrial Revolution and our children are being introduced to the AI. We would like to propose that it would rather be better for our children to use tablets. Instead of having thirteen text, textbooks where they share. And using tablets where the books or textbooks can be loaded as PDF. And our children can be, um, able to use those. In that, I would like to say that I do not support this, thank you.
Uh, thanks chair and good evening to the house here. Uh, I will speak to, I will speak to what I agree to and what I do not agree to. My name is Bosdikove from Itu saying, and I'm also the Prime Secretary of Sato, eh, in Itu saying. Uh, we want to discard, eh, section eight on the sale of liquor at schools with the contempt that it deserves. Was saying that it can be right that, eh, there is a proposal to sell alcohol at our schools. Eh, a school must, must remain a school, eh, this thing of selling alcohol will be done at taverns. Uh, I'm also aligning myself with the man who said that, eh, we must criminally charge whoever who can with this proposal to sell alcohol at school. Uh, secondly, we support, eh, homeschool education. Uh, primarily because that it is, it, it must be regulated. We must agree that, eh, we can't have a situation where people are going to, eh, have homeschool education, but it is not regulated. What is going to happen if we can't regulate this homeschool education? So we support this and we're saying that it must be, eh, regulated. Three, eh, we reject the following centralization of L T S M. Uh, other, eh, speakers have said before me that, eh, there are still schools now who have not received L T S M. And year in and year out, we still have schools that have, that receive L T S M late. So we are opposed to the view or the proposal that, eh, L T S M must be centralized. Uh, four, we are also rejecting the proposal that, eh, the employees of the department must not do business with the, with state. At least we're saying here that with us, we're not going to go behind their closed doors to conduct business. It will be transparent, you know, unlike what we have seen with senior, eh, department officials. Uh, that are benefiting from, eh, businesses with the state. We saw that happening again during the time of COVID. Uh, another thing here is that, eh, we are proposing that, eh, the SGB members should be remunerated for the good work that they are doing. So that you don't have a situation where you've got, eh, eight SGB members, but out of eight, you only have two who are committed. So we're saying that, let us, let us give them, eh, some sort of incentive so that they are motivated and they could, they can do the good work. Uh, there's another point here that speaks about, eh, having, eh, or allowing the meeting of the SGB to run, even if it does not reach quorum. Uh, I'm very much worried about this because we're having a situation now where parents do not attend meetings. Now, if you say that parents, if you say that, eh, if parents don't come to the second meeting, then the meeting can, eh, proceed. Even if, eh, the meeting does not reach, eh, quorum. You are essentially saying that parents, it is okay for you not to come to meetings, eh, where your child goes to school. And that is not right because we need parental involvement at all times and that must be hundred percent correct. So we must never allow a situation where a meeting is going to be, eh, eh, convened. Or attended by eight out of hundred parents. And we say that it is the second meeting, therefore the meeting must continue, even if it does not reach quorum. We need to have parents on board, hundred percent. It can be right that we are going to say to parents, it's okay for you to not to come to a meeting. So, I, I'm not for this one, eh, parents must come to a meeting if they does not reach quorum or does not correct. That meeting must not sit because we want those parents. At the moment, eh, 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 at the moment, eh, we're having a situation where teachers are.
This side now. And ten. I'm coming, for the last round, I'm gonna come. For two more this side. Yeah. Ukane wa, start up.
I wish in, good, good afternoon to all people present. I am Rulano Gobineleleni, S R C of Mafiki World School. I wish in to, I wish in to all, good afternoon to all people present. I am Rulano Gobineleleni, S R C of Mafiki World School. I disagree with clause eight, amend section eight A. Alcohol harm and its implications for society has significant challenge in South Africa. With youth drinking as an issue of particular concern, despite this, government proposed that legislation be passed with. Which will allow alcohol to be served or sold on school premises and at school activities for fundraising purposes. A panel of experts recently warned of the many dangers of doing so in a web, webinar sponsored by the Southern African Alcohol Policy Alliance in S A. The panel said that although the legislation will not allow learners access to alcohol. The having of alcohol on school premises will be a temptation for them. Alcohol use in society is already normalized through advertising and social practice. So having it available in school will normalize its use even further in the eyes of learners. Allowing alcohol at schools will have a lasting detrimental effect on learners such as. Impact learner's safety, disrupt the school space, a space that is aimed for nourishing. And educating learners, not looking for conditions on how to get them drunk. In other countries, I don't believe that there is such things implemented in the school. Stop failing us, South Africa's learners, thank you.
Are you supporting or not the bill? You need to go to the mic to tell us you are supporting or not the bill.
I do support the bill, but worth excluding.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings to everyone, I would like to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I am Katjomolotani, R C L President of Mafiki High School. I'm here to add as to what it is that I feel should be implemented in schools. As we all know, the grade R's learners content focuses, focuses in three subjects mainly being language, meds, life skills. Life skills including shapes, coloring and weather etc. Life skills should include actual life skills needed such as what it means to be human. Many learners or people in general don't have knowledge as to how one should act or be in terms of manners. Grade R must include learning about kindness, friendliness. Respecting one another's opinions, beliefs and religions, seeing as to how that is what we need and use on a day to day basis. There are many households whereby the child bullies the parent no matter how much he or she tries to teach the child proper manners. And learning all these factors as a child will forever stick with us as we grow older. And learning all these factors as a child will forever stick with us as we grow older, which will lead to South Africa being able to work together in a united society with a goal of making our economy great. And my second point is, every high school must have or implement an outreach program which will help in certain issues such as rape, GBV, and abuse. Abuse not only being physically, but also emotionally and mentally. It is said that teachers are our parents at school, but we have to remember that teachers are not trained to be able to handle the weight that some learners carry. Many learners that are victims of rape and violence are afraid to speak up because they are afraid of judgment and are concerned about their safety. Having problems like these will teach children and young boys and girls on how to treat each other. The programs must include teaching boys and girls that women are not an object. Women, girls, and society must respect males who have been raped or abused instead of judging them and mocking their masculinity. Teachers at school, especially the older ones, should learn that the world is evolving and because girls wear tank tops and shorts, it doesn't mean that they are looking for attention or they want to provoke the opposite gender. Society should learn that how females dress is not only once in schools, but young adults as well, is not wrong, but how the other gender sees it is what should be dealt with. I thank you.
Are you supporting the bill or not?
I do support the bill.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings to all in attendance. Hi Zanolo Mbali of Mafikiang High School. I'm speaking on clause eight, amend section eight A. In 2022, Section Eight, One B of the latest version of the bill still says liquor should be banned from school premises. But in the very next section, eight one C, it says schools can have liquor on school premises and add school activities off school premises mainly for fundraising purposes, which is contradicting. Legalizing the use on school premises where product that can cause non-communical diseases such as cancer, road accidents, and interpersonal violence including GBV. Dealing with the problem of funding by creating potential multiple socioeconomic issues is irresponsible and unethical. It is not certain that whatever safeguards contemplated in the legislation can guarantee that children will be protected and measures to control consumption will in fact work. For example, a learner of fifteen years of age can ask either a teacher or a learner of eighteen years of age to purchase alcohol on their behalf. I support the bill, but the possession, consumption, and sale of alcohol on school premises would definitely lead to a lot of problems and I thus strongly disagree with the contemplation of legalizing alcohol on school premises. I thank you.
Are you supporting or not?
I support.
Oh, thanks.
Greetings to my beautiful kings and queens of tomorrow. I, Fofana Kosi Tielamotale, the Chairperson of the RCL of Mafikiang High School, don't support that conditions under liquor may be possessed, consumed, or sold on school premises. It states that after the release of Basic Education Laws Amendment Bill of 2022, many misinterpreted certain aspects of the bill, particularly concerning the sale of alcohol on school premises. However, many schools do sell alcohol during certain fundraising events and alcohol is sometimes consumed on school premises when a school has hired out their hall for a wedding or private functions. But I believe that alcohol shouldn't be consumed nor sold on school premises because it will persuade children that alcohol is a normal part of life. And we don't want us, the youth, to end up seeing ourselves consuming alcohol because it may lead us to lack of performance, lack of inhibitions, and poor school attendance. And we all know that children who start drinking at an early stage, they often become lifelong problem drinkers as adults. So I, as a proud South African, don't support the conditions under which liquor may be possessed, consumed, or sold on school premises. And I believe as an individual that one day I will change our environment and make it a better place to live. Have a blessed day. I thank you.
Are you supporting or not supporting the bill?
I'm not supporting.
Your voice, yeah? Very big.
Eh, du melam ba hole. Lina ke teboho, sefani ke pele, ke zako Aresana Primary School, Rosani Sof. Eh, ke twaredi ba impiri te pedi. Actually, ki buklet de ea, Bella ebena de samar. Heki di balak concerning liquor, honale contradiction. I kizoroi sonso honayalo, that is why honale confusion ea, who support and not to support. More this booklet, i ko tila most section eight A, no person may bring alcohol onto the public school. But more, eh, we are a provision to bring it to school. So honale contradiction for hole in G.A. Eh, ki samaria two pages and this booklet, no person may be allowed to bring that alcohol. And then the other thing, eh, ki buankayone ki monetary learners' attendance. Usually, kakodi site in teleza rona ki rural area, bana ba travel agadi base. Bana lohola for eight days and then kaza tila bo na edewana outta school. Aba continue a fela mo register. So I'm happy that if we are on one, I live for three days. If I love for three days, the educator, I report to the principal and the principal within twenty-four hours. At a master, abonokor, problemi ki enwana sa te school. So I support that. And then regarding the homeschooling. For homeschooling, eh, could we support hook? Because educators, they have a regulatory body, eh, links says, eh, ba controller. So ki putarot homeschooling boy, ba controller ki man this parents. I give bana le the annual teaching plan. Eh, ba idiri san kuru tabana aba. And honale what you call program of assessment. Or how that's a root down one, you have to assess that lane. So this parents, boy, ne ba ba assess our own risk grounds. So at the end of the year, one, I get to rawa pasa or procedure to the next rate. Or what's a halang, I'm not sure. So this homeschooling, ukare inyata, bana ba ba yang school, ba fo thake serami, ba palama di bese ba ya school. Bale boy, ne ba roote ha, eh, the comfort of their homes. So that is not fair at all. And then the language policy. Language policy, ki kapula tla rally school fund for leba kaladi SGBs. SGBs bana li di powers to decide the language eh, nohoro ba kaidiri sakoskolo. Of which, mo di kolonse di ndi, tenko Sanisof larsko lo qual. Ki Afrika, sekione fala eru tam, bana ba ba ndi, ba feila, ba hole ba, ona ba hole, le repal, le ki kuisa ba na, kudi kolonse. I myself, ki neke le di se kuisa wanaki kote, but because ki pa la ki Afrika, sebe ki bana or, ah ah. Ki tui ti re la ba ta ta, wanaka ka, his verka ya, vesken de, ki pa la ki rumutus. So because ki ba ta hona involved, the more education niangwanaki, kabana hori, eh, ri ki buela komo ra, ki steka, kap, kaylo frustrate, wanaki, ayako Afrika, skole, aylo rotiwa go. And then, hona ba ba, ba hole ba, lo ba di kuwa di kuswane, ba pa la ki, school fees, saluxi di tamae noa ki SGB. Thank you.
Support or not?
Eh, I partially support this bill.
Alright.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Mr. Wohopile from Aresana Primary School in Sanisof. Now, I've noted that there's a contradiction between the two documents that I was holding in my hands. The booklet says that with regards to liquor in the school premises, it says that no person should bring alcohol in the school premises, whereas the other document that I had at hand, it said that provision to bring alcohol in school should be monitored or should be visited. So now there's a contradiction to that. And also, another thing that this bill talks about is monitoring learners' attendance. Now, it is problematic to us in our area because we are a rural area and the children are ferried by bus transport to the schools. So some of them become absent for about eight days or so and then on the ninth day, that is when they will register their attendance. So it becomes a problem when they are being ferried by bus transport in a rural area. So I'm happy that this bill encourages the principal to look into the matter of why the children have been absent for a long time because since it says that a child can attend school for three days. So the principal should look into the matter why their child has been absent for longer. And then, the problem that I have with homeschooling, it is that educators are being monitored. But the question is who monitors? The parents who are teaching their children. There are also some criterias that have to be attended to, like annual assessment report and so on. So we as educators, we have to submit such assessments. Now, the question is, do they submit their assessments? And also the curriculum and the learning system that they use. And then, and then homeschooling, actually, it is to undermine and insult the children that have to stand in the cold and the rain, only to be afforded to go to school and get an education. And then, another thing that worries me a lot is that the SGB powers to language policy. And now, it is a problem for me as an example because I would like my child to go to the African school, but now it's going to hinder my child's progress since African city is the medium of instruction. So it becomes a problem that we cannot take our children to the schools that we would like them to go to due to the language policy issue. And also, another thing that is of concern is that some parents who come from a disadvantaged background are pressured and they do have problems with the increment of school fees in such schools. So it's a matter that also should be looked into.
Can I kindly request if you are able to speak English for purposes of time? I'm not against vernacular, but for purposes of time and accommodating other people to quickly fasten the.
Okay, greetings colleagues. Yeah, I'm here as a Sato member from Ituising branch who also work as an educator at one of the special schools in Ituising. I came here before to address, maybe to deal with this issue of homeschooling first, to say. Like the former speakers have alreadyuded to, that when we talk about formal education, we therefore talk about an education that is must be regulated unless or otherwise they want to render our Department of Education useless. Still on the issue, I want to believe when in terms of education, teaching and learning, a learner is supposed to be taught holisticard. And when we talk about holistic development of a learner, we also must address the issues of social cohesion. So I'm little bit skeptic as to homeschooling. How does it address that matter of social cohesion of the learners? The former counterpart, I want to also believe that they are trying to hide behind their learners with special barriers to learning, of which I also disagree to it and say. The government of the Republic have provided us with special school which cover such learners with behavioral needs such as autistic, ADDH, and so on. So therefore, all learners must attend the formal school. Home base school or homeschooling, I disregard it in totality. And also, yeah, we must also check on how are they assessed? Because assessment is also monitored in terms of progressive assessment and so on and so on. Again, let me touch on the issue of SGB reporting quarterly onto their financial reports. It's a duty of the department, as it also does to train our SGB members on terms of PMFA and financial handling of the schools. To say, let it be, if they are trained, let them report. But upon reporting, at least let them be remunerated for those quarterly submissions of financials of their schools. And also, the last one that I wanted to check. Okay, let me go. Let me say I support the bill wholeheartedly so with the assertion that SGB must be remunerated. Thank you very much.
Eh, du melam ba twadi, le ba sha. Ki, ki lebochile mueli, eh, ki membaya ACDP, ki du la kudi chovotla. Eh, eh, ki ti kiduti moles bakas, si tele ki redite, ki, ki neki fila like I'm useless. Eh, kere kake me enough. More especially when coming to this thing ya, eh, alcohol koskolo, eh, entwene ya, ya bojalo koskolo. Ko hori, eh, ne kere, eh, ba tu ba ba, ba ba amend tangdis, eh, eh, milao eh. Bakabu ba kisiwa, ba bewa fa jaka le be. I know, sometimes, hey, si lo na li rumilo, zamelo, loho ba ra le re lu, kore ba re. So eh, kere kuke, kuke, kuchingwa, ene boy, ne ba ba ta. Re le ba hanele, boy, ne face to face. Ki mo, ze ki beki mulela, kuri ki kuyang, kade loze ba di di rang, kabana barona. Eh, kere ba le ba la hori, bana ba ba buang, kabane ba, ki bana ba rona. And re ho disete ba na ba, re ba ruta ka Christianity. I've got a right, kai, itu hori, eh, di righti ta, kadi, ta ma kai, di fela kuka. So ki rutile ba na ba, kahori, es Christians, mo halo na mo, hopilo yan. Sex before marriage is a sin. Eh, ne ki di ra yalo, es elida, ya bo ne ku, ki ba boi ta ba, itu hori ki te la yan. Bampona every day. Unfortunately, haba jo mu ku, ba ya koskolo, kobe cha nete ba ete. So seki si buang, le boy, se achinja ena something else. Ne kere ba twadi, rekopa hori, milao eh, hai bewa. Eh, ne eh, kere kuke, tuwa pele ko groundu, before, I get to, kudi wa yan. Kudi wa pele, mo koro na mo, kudi kore, nari lo na li na hana, kore, koka di riwa, inu tu sa baana. Eh, for example, honale ti loze di intete rona, ba to di ritu, kore, di ka tu sa baana ba rona. But harina ma, ah, koka bua le ba tu ba cha na li lo na, kosa na yan, kore. Maybe I get to reka, 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 koka kope, ne le ro na jan. Hori re talo se, kore, ba tu, kodi kolon, why eh, mo yo ne programis, hanali, eh, eh, bilis, hanali, eh, today. Why kosa ni, le hori, eh, akere kere, kabe itu, ba ba ta kobe. Why was a thingi, eh, 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 kodi kolon, ino hori, one, ha, fa ta great twelve. Ha, twaka Steve Gates, saha, he, apasi te metri, anneli driver's license. Kap e, eh, eh, itu sa di SMEs, te di linkeng locally. Ba te, ba ba tu sangka, eh, drivers, ya kadi, kati, cha nete, sahu, rupella, ba na, kore, baneli di license. Why resa fiwi chono, ya kubua, kaba na ba rona, kore, renar kaba na kore, kuka na bu to, kahori. Bana ba, 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 koka di riwa, inu banis. Aso hori, haritu, koe ta halanga, bana ba kai tu. Kori ya bojalo ye, ne, totally is very wrong. Ki du melanale, ne ona, eh, eh, abua fa are. Mu tu ona, bua di loze, kora, kore, lena, tota, ona, si mo si mo, si si ami. Kori, abu esu se, asu bile. Eh, ne, i bile, kap e, okay. Kla ki fili listas, something, please.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Greetings. My name is Gilabuchile Mueki. I was sitting there listening to all the speakers and I was feeling useless. I was feeling like I am not a mother enough, especially in the issue of alcohol. I wish people who put these laws in place would come here so that we can confront them about the laws that they implement for our children. For instance, in my home, I have raised my children to follow Christianity, where we believe that sex before marriage is a sin. And now, when I send my children to school, all that I have taught them would be changed in these schools because of what they bring, because of these laws that they bring in schools. Can we be consulted before these laws be implemented or be put in place as we know what is best for our children? Lastly, can they implement learners having driver's licenses after metri? This would help them to proceed and it will also support SMEs. Why are we not given an opportunity to tell you what is best for our children as we know what is best? Thank you. Thank you.
Uh thank you very much. Uh greetings to everyone. My name is Voyo and my surname is Manjul. I'm the provincial organizer of the South African Student Congress. Now, my take is on subsection twenty-six of Act eighty-four of nineteen ninety-six. It's about the recruitment of staff and employment section. It talks about SGB. Now, we must look at the panelist issue of SGBs who sit there and interview our candidates because of, you'll find out, most of the SGBs people who sit there are people who do not even have grade twelve or have finished post nineteen ninety-four. Now, you could imagine being employed eh being interviewed by a person who didn't even finish grade twelve but you are a graduate. What do you expect to that particular person? The second issue is on traditional beliefs. In most of our schools, not even most, in some of our schools, we have Islamic religions eh and other religions beliefs. Now, there's a flu that is currently rising on. Most of our learners currently, the past previous years, past two years, they are becoming traditional healers. And currently, those particular learners, they are being suspended and expelled in their schools. We must look at eh in those particular amendments or how are we going to accommodate those particular learners? Because of, we do believe that each and every school has its own eh rules and regulations to accommodate each and every belief. Now, the last issue I want to stress, it's about an issue of grade R R. Now, you'd find eh in the past, we used to have, we used to start school from grade R exactly. Grade one, in fact, exactly. Now we do have grade R R. Now, what's going to be the use of a crash particularly because of? You'd find out eh 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 eh, a learner, not even a learner, a young kid starts grade R, then goes to grade R the same this other year, now goes to eh grade R because of, what is the use of grade R? Is it not a preparation, a preparing place to for you to go to the following year of which is grade R? Or which is makes it eh, I would say it wastes enough times and financial matters in terms of when you have to start grade R for two years. Thank you.
Are you supporting the bill or not?
I'm supporting the bill.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Swanepoel and I'm a home educator. I reject the bill in its entirety, especially clause thirty-seven. To a few of our critics from before, we wouldn't be here if we had anything to hide. Please remember that the apartheid government banned home education. That is why you had to be subject to a school system you opposed. And are teachers also tested for undiagnosed conditions? My home is not as comfortable as it can be because I'm giving up salary. Teachers write reports primarily to inform parents about students' progress. Home educating parents know how their children are progressing. Our children socialize across a wide variety of ages and cultures. We want them to be socially inti- integrated. No school system has the capacity to act in the best interest of my children. I know my children, know their strengths and weaknesses, know their needs and can act in their best interest. I have been educating them from birth. Why? According to point one of clause thirty-seven, should I now ask permission to continue to do so? I have four boys, each with their own unique needs and academic challenges. My oldest struggle with a form of dyslexia and will not cope in the school system. I cannot expect, I have the time and capacity to tend to his challenge, but I cannot expect a teacher in a school classroom to give him the same attention at the cost of so many other students. His academic struggle could also make him the ridicule of fellow students and expose him to bullying at school. For our family, home education has made it possible to accommodate each specific individual. We do not need caps, objectives and assessments prescribed in section two and three of clause thirty-seven to be enforced upon us. My husband and I aim to bring up functioning adults that will be an asset to society. We utilize our academic program to help them understand their responsibility in taking ownership for their own lives and choices. How ownership cultivates discipline that leads to freedom? How freedom provides opportunities to make noble choices? Through academics, we teach them that their choices have consequences and understanding the consequences defines leadership. Teaching my kids these virtues through academics becomes possible with relationship. Building relationship takes time and effort, time and effort that is achievable in my home. My parental responsibility is to love and protect my children, to evaluate, to evaluate what they are exposed to because it influences who they become. We use a high-quality program that exposes them to goodness, beauty and the ultimate truth, Jesus Christ, so that the goodness and the beauty of our ultimate truth, in I will say, to be that asset.
Eh kidumadi sa bayembarona, kamo kuleme yarowaka, waki morata antata, redsepi sompe.
Closer to the mic, ma'am.
Eh kidumalanali bili, me kexana nalekhainga bojalo akodi kolongo. Lebaka lelo kolongo, kexana nalekhainga bojalo akodi kolongo, kikona kena kana isiksa me kenua bojalo. And as a single parent, aketanzora no wa na kaya kuru tuwa bojalo koskolong. Na kibata kuleka koro wa namola bin, kemu kodi sakaku lo, ena bata di baka ban kodi sitengayo. Nekeko pa na kilesu kore mo kaninga ya bojalo, bale ko kudi mukwa. Annelika skela create dami bereko, kaboro shotaka me bereko. Degraduatedi duiti mo fasibile baberaka modi kichini. Ha tansu baberaka, khatoko bakuwa experience, bago ta kaya experience eh. Kapa la menteng ya ro na, ille old age ifela. Old age, eighteen to thirty, romar batal meraka kati eighteen to thirty-five. Kapa la mentengi old age, ya nonre bereken ya unkotlasi. Nane keko pa ro, old age ifoluhe, ba chaba pa la me, kaboro ba graduatedi. Lorna ro kana kore gaina experience, kialibo.
Um I I support the bill first and foremost. Uh this besides the issue of alcohol. The reason why I I'm against alcohol uh uh being in the school premises is because I myself have never drank alcohol in my life. Now you tell me that my child has to learn to drink uh and not be taught their values and the discipline that I instill upon them eh in my home. And then another thing uh that you should be talking about is creating employment for our our graduates. Our graduates are unemployed. And then when they seek employment, they will tell them that uh they must have experience. And then they also tell them that they should be between the ages of eighteen to thirty-five in order to be a candidate for employment. But in parliament, there's no such things, there's no there's no such thing as eighteen to thirty-five. You have pensioners and old people who are supposed to be retiring. So please retire as parliamentarians who are old so that you can create space for our graduates and then they can work eh 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 in your position. Thank you.
Wish I could, I could have stood up while this hall was filled up so that our people could go out of here with much brighter enlightenment of what's really going on here. I'm not going to quote any clause or section, as tall as I am. I am going to be shot. I, Komosoramashilabele, I come here as a concerned participator of this gathering. The bill itself, it's providing confusion to the community filled in this hall. There are details concerning this amended clause that favor us all. But there are some that as an individual, you would ask yourself if the people who wrote this bill are right in their minds. If one says he or she supports the bill, automatically, the whole bill as it is will be implemented, will be an implemented rule of the outcome of this gathering. The people who wrote this bill were really strategic about making the community here confused. And at the end of the day, you agree with the bill. Emotions are now up because of the amendments inserted here. Scars and wounds are now open. So I kindly request the community to go back, sit down and invest all into drafting this bill before it could be presented to the community. Therefore, I am not in support of this bill.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tappu Shupi from Wotei Five Mahikensap region. And today on behalf of the NC, I'm here to submit and say that we support the bill. But we do not just blindly support the bill. The following is what I personally do not agree with. And there are reasons for that. The provision of alcohol in the schooling environment. It's one thing that I would request that it's scrapped out of the bill. And that is because we come from eh, especially us, blacks. We come from very struggling families where some are child-headed, some are single-parent headed. And given the economical challenges that we face as black communities, our parents, us as parents, we do not have the luxury of type. Because you find a parent who leaves a house in the morning at five o'clock and comes back at nine o'clock in the evening. There is no supervision. On weekends during school events, they struggle to be part of those events. So we do see it in white communities where when there's rugby, there's cricket, there is alcohol there. Why? Because there's proper supervision. The very same people who went there, they're having our parents in their factories, working up until the late evening. They have that luxury of type. So now, sometimes these laws when are made, we live in an equal unequal society. That must be taken into cognizance. Secondly, we reject the centralization of the L T S M. We also were not against homeschooling. But as many speakers have already said that if teachers can be regulated, this system also must not just exist without any regulation. Because we are all equal, we are we are guided by the same constitution as citizens of this country. So why a certain segment can just exist without any regulation? Who does it report to? What is it that is measured against? And the last one, we are saying the SGBs must be remunerated, just like world committees are remunerated. Thank you. I support the bill on those basis.
Um thank you very much. You are one now. You are now one man. No, 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 the eighty, eighty. Okay, go, go, four, five. Ah eh eh, what is eh eh now? I'm coming from your side, ma'am. Ah ah, don't do that. Seven, eight, both of you. How many are you this side? Who was saying eh eh? You don't want to speak? Uswara gitlan? All right, we are finishing up now. You 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 yourself, pa? Yes, that's the last end, that's the, oh, ten, ten, we are finishing. We we are closing now, no more hands after this one. All right. All right, so sorry for it, convenience, but you can.
No problem. Um good evening, everyone. My name is Arista Anndale. I'm a DA councillor here from Mafiki local municipality. I oppose this bill for the following reasons. The bill curbs SGB powers. It undermines communities by seeking to centralize power in education departments. The bill ignores pressing issues such as the high dropout rate, lack of resources regarding teachers, classrooms and infrastructure, safety hazards in the form of pit toilets, mud classrooms, dilapidated buildings and asbestos roofs, and also poor quality teachers that are not qualified to teach their subjects. This bill is an attack on the autonomy of SGBs. The department should rather focus on issues relating to the quality of the education that learners are receiving. Thank you.
Next.
Eh thanks, Chair. Bukoni Bupirimadmela. Eh I am Zukisi, the son of Dingile. Eh Kimuruti. And I'm a member in good standing of ACDP under the leadership of President Reverend Kenneth Mishwe, the one and only president. Now, the one and only president, I want to repeat it, Chair. Eh Chair, do not worry about that, we will see. Let me do my submission on behalf of the ACDP and say, Chair, if if this bill is not an abortion bill, then prove it to me. And then we want to reject this Bella Bill as ACDP, and in particular clause forty-one. That amends section sixty-one of the South African Schools Act. Now, this bill allows the minister to make regulations concerning learners' pregnancy. Normally, the minister will make those regulations in terms of a policy. The DBE's policy on the prevention and management of learners' pregnancy state that its purpose is to provide sexually reproductive health services to learners as young as twelve. This can be done secretly. This can be done without the parents or guardians knowing. This also can be done without the consent of parents and even against the wishes of parents. Now, the DBE may claim that this uh this is not how they will do or they will use these regulations and that this is not a school abortion. I have then three questions, Chairperson, that I want to ask to you. The question one would be, does the policy on the prevention and management of learner pregnancy in schools not state in page eighteen? I'm sure you know it. The objectives are to provide the SRH services, including access to effective contraceptive technologies in association with social sector partners, to enable learners to make informed choices, avoid unintended pregnancies or, as necessary, to obtain abortions. I want to stress this. Eh, this does not say information, which would be bad enough. It says services. The DBE is providing services. Yo. Question two would be, does the Children's Act not allow children as young as twelve to obtain what is called medical treatment without parental consent? And is abortion not considered medical treatment by this very same government? Question three, which is the last one. If your regulations on learner pregnancy are not going to be based on your policy on learner pregnancy, what are they going to be based on? Now, Chairperson, as ACDP will say, therefore, we call on this and will continue to call this a school abortion. Unless and until you publish the draft regulations, say who is writing these regulations, include people of faith from all groups, put into the bill the clause relating to learner pregnancy, exclude from the bill and any regulations, any reference to abortion. We reject is this bill, Chair Percy.
Thank you, Morut. Thank you very much.
Good evening. This is Revelation Mangue, PR councillor of the DA in Mafiki local municipality. As the DA, we are opposing this bill. The DA is the is is one of main of of many organizations that have raised serious concerns about the bill. Our concerns are as follows, we I will only quote two. Language and admission police. The Bella Bill, the Bella Bill, the Bella Bill will remove the powers of school governing bodies, SGBs. The Bella Bill, the Bella Bill, the Bella Bill will remove the powers of school governing bodies, S G Bs, to make decisions about language and admission policies for their schools. The bill will be used to, to target mother tongue education, especially African school. The constitution protects the right to mother tongue education where this is reasonably practical. The other one, the other concern is that homeschooling. The department did not gather enough information from the homeschooling sector before writing regulations for it. The Bella Bill regulations will not ensure quality education through homeschooling and ignore the unique challenges of this sector. As the DA, we are opposing this.
Afternoon. Juliet Jony Lata speaking. I'm sorry, Chair, I would like to speak Kosa and our mix.
Can you just...
I'll fill somewhere, I will not be expressing myself enough. Okay, my, my point, just few, is the L T S M, is the grade R and the homeschooling. For the grade R, I'm very much concerned and I'm very worried. And I've, I've also done my own research and my study. That kids for grade R, I think they are very much disadvantaged to be taken straight to school. I think the private daycare center or the private crutches were good enough for the grade Rs. I think the department is not ready for the grade Rs. It is so worrying and so frustrating. The kids wake up at four o'clock rushing for transport because the parents are going to work. And secondly, the kids, when they reach school at six o'clock because the transport have to drop them. And I'm talking about the four and the five-year-olds. They don't get that nurturing that they're supposed to get from the parents. And when they get there at school by the gates at six o'clock and they wait for the teacher or the caretaker to open the gates, they go to the class. The environment is not conducive for those age group. The classrooms, almost ninety percent of the schools, the classroom, that is the learning or the playroom in their language, is not conducive at all, at all, I mean, zero. The things that you get inside the class, they don't even get a nap. The class, the, the school ends at twelve o'clock, they don't get a nap. The environment, there are no beds in the classroom for the kids to sleep. All of the kids is a disaster for the grade Rs to go to the, to the formal school. And then the L T S M, the L T S M, the part of the L T S M eh, um, material is not providing for the grade Rs. The things that are ordered there is the books. And those kids, they don't necessarily need books. And the crayons is only one packet, it's totally disaster. Let me pass that one. I'm also rejecting the alcohol. But I did not dwell enough on the grade Rs. I wish we could make a whole day on that grade R issue. And the alcohol, I'm also saying no. And then the S G Bs, I think for the S G Bs to bring more commitment, they need salary, just like any board member. And also the R R. The R R also, I'm also concerned the same as the R. I also suggest the online schooling. And I also support the homeschooling, but with a big but. Only if the department can make a full campaign on teaching the community about the homeschooling. I think the attitude is from their less knowledge. And also people feel like it's not regulated enough. Maybe it is regulated, it's just that you don't know. Thank you.
Are you supporting the bill or not?
I am supporting the bill.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Thank you so much, Chair, for, for the opportunity. I would, I would like to greet the house in the revolutionary spirit of Comrade Oliver Rishan Tumbo. My leader, I would, I would like to start my point on the amendment section ten of, um, section ten of Act eighty-four of nineteen ninety-six of corporal punishment. I would like to advise that, um, can the parliament look into the issue of teaching our learners about responsibilities to their rights? Because when the government abolished corporal punishment, they did not come up with enough ways of teaching children about what is expected of them. They, they know their rights and they, they preach their rights, but they do not have knowledge on their responsibilities. Children know that they have to go to school and learn. They know that they have the right to education and they cannot be chased out of the classroom. But they don't know that they, they also have the responsibility to do their, their work as, as, as children, which is, um, a responsibility that, that is supposed to be coupled with the right to education. So I, I, I come here representing the members of Mokwezi Primary School and I also wanted to touch on the issue that I did not find in this document. I don't know if I didn't read it clearly or what, but I did not see the policy on progression. We, we have a problem as teachers in the classroom. I want to give you a, a practical example of what is happening in the classroom. A child gets to grade R and the grade R teachers are told that, that learner is not supposed to fail. And then the learner gets to a foundation phase, which is practically your grade R to grade four. And they, they are only allowed to fail once in that phase. After they fail once in that phase, they are going to repeat, they are going to be pushed three times until they reach, um, your grade four to grade six, where they are also supposed to fail only once. And they are pushed from grade seven to grade nine. The same thing goes on until the learner is in grade twelve, without having even a single report that says the learner has passed. So we are producing future South Africans that are graduates from school, but they never passed even once. So can we please have a look into that, eh, policy on, on progression? Thank you, ma'am.
Are you supporting or not the bill?
I'm supporting the bill.
Thank you. Next.
I support the bill.
Um, first and foremost, I would like to say that I support, I support the bill. Um, but there are other issues, um, uh, issues that are, that are criteria that I do not support. Number one, it is alcohol. Um, I, it's a total no for me because this is going to destroy children in schools. The second one, it is the age issue. Uh, when, when I grew up, I knew that you can never be too old to learn. So now, when there is a age capping, uh, it is an issue that I do not agree with. And then number three, it is, uh, is in relation to pregnancy. Um, I don't believe that a pregnant child should be in a class. That child must stay home, give birth, uh, raise the child until the child is old enough, then they can go back to class. Number four, it is, um, in relation to S G B salary. I believe that the S G B should get, uh, something, they should get a salary because of the workload of being an S G B member. I was, I resigned as an S G B member because, uh, due to the workload. So, uh, it is not, uh, that they're going to enjoy this money, but there are costs of being an S, S, uh, S G B, uh, uh, to be an S G B. And this will reimburse the costs that come with being a member of S G B. And then the fifth one, it is that I will plead that the assembly should be brought back to the school. There should be a prayer, uh, from the blessing of God that things will go right in the school.
Black child, you are on your own. By me saying that, I greet the house at large, I go by the name of... Did I increase my voice? Okay. Am I audible? I go by the name of Wusuamblenga. I am the deputy chairperson of S.A.S. Kusolubu Kabab Branch. I won't be quoting any, uh, clauses, however... Can I please have a password of the phone? However, I'll be focusing on homeschooling. Excuse. Uh, I, I take it that the parents who want to homeschool their children have their educational interest at heart. However, our less privileged parents also wants the best for us. I fail to understand why is the system in reaching the rich and the poorer continues being poorer? Our request is to have the same curriculum as those of homeschooling. We cannot afford our brothers and sisters, um, excuse, we cannot afford our brothers and sisters to a limited education. The house will correct me if I'm wrong. Our public schools are grooming us to become teachers and nurses. However, the homeschooling curriculum grooms their learners to become scientists, et cetera. Why not introduce subjects that will help our kids to excel in their educational journey? For the likes of the grade R, we have languages, we have mathematics, we also have life skills. Why can't life skills at least add on farming as a part of the syllabus? From grade one, how can another country have mining and farming as their subject? Marco counting abone, basa ekonomia abone is based on farming and farming and mining. How can that be? South Africa, ekonomia abone is based on that. Uh, I partially support the bill.
May I just translate the final part? Yeah. So she mentioned that, um, there, there should be, uh, subjects that should be added in the curriculum, like, like farming and, and mining. A child should be taught that this is a seed and when you plant it into the ground, it will grow to be this, uh, this, this certain plant. Because in other countries, they do have such subjects as farming and, um, and and, and, and mining. Whereas they do not have, uh, the production of such things. They do not have farms, they do not have mines, but they have such, such, such subjects. So how much more so here in South Africa? Because this is our main, um, this is the heart of our economy, farming and mining. So such, such subjects should be included into the curriculum.
Protocol observed. My, my name is Dumele Motlacheng. Um, I partially go with the bill. Eh, my first point that I'm gonna, uh, talk about this homeschooling. Uh, I believe that there's a thin line, maybe that's why we still talking and telling regarding this, uh, homeschooling thing. Uh, because this thin line is because, uh, communities, I believe that communities have not yet gained knowledge regarding homeschooling. Because I, I personally believe that already we have, uh, we already like as communities have started like this homeschooling thing. Because now, there are, there are principles that we teach our children before even going to school. So, eh, on that note, I believe that early learning, eh, phase, which is before the recession grade, which is grade R, I believe is very, very important on like, uh, like preparing, uh, small children for, uh, education or rather three phases of education, which is foundation, intermediate and senior phase. Because on this age, on this, during this time or rather this years, it is, is the time whereby now, uh, we can assess learners if they are, if, if, if rather they are well fit to go to contact schools or rather homeschools. Because as parents, different parents have been raising, uh, issues that maybe like, uh, learners, they go for homeschooling because of some other difficulties that their kids have. So that time, it is the time whereby now, the department will be able to assess, eh, different learners at large. So, uh, this is very important before, eh, the recession grade. And again, the other thing is that this would also help on, like, improving the language throughout, eh, the whole system. Because now, this, that time, it will be the time whereby we prepare, we will be preparing, right? So using, eh, common, common language, which is English, I guess I would go with that, like throughout. And like that, yes, those, throughout these years, it will be the time whereby now, we'll be preparing or rather teaching learners on labeling, eh, insects and all that, whereby we'll be narrowing like all the time that we use on, in these three phases to, 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 to teach learners on how to label, eh, insects and all that. So, and those years, we can implement, eh, like what my sister just said, uh, the agricultural, the mining subjects and all those. That, and because that one, at that point will be one point that will, eh, rather enhance the, the economy at large. Because now we are at the stage whereby economy is, is, is going down or is already down. So amending, eh, the, again, the education system, eh, it will be to advantage, to...
Are you supporting or not supporting?
I partially support.
Revolutionary greetings to you all. I go by the name of Musabeng Kose Mogeti, the presiding president of the R C L Indivare and Structures across the Northwest Province. My focus area focuses on section thirty-two, subsection C, clause number four. A learner who is a member of the S G B should have a say on the running of the school and the appointment of educators and uneducators. Learners who are part of the S G B must be given an opportunity to take part as this will help them learn responsibility. They should also be considered to be part of decision-making as whatever decisions that are made in the S G B will eventually affect them. That is why, it is response, that is why it is very important for the R C L to ensure that the learners whom they are representing are well represented in the S G B. Lastly, I wanted to address or talk about the section one of the Liquid Act, number fifty-nine of two thousand and three. Millions of death will not have happened if it went for the consumption of alcohol. Same applies to the future of our learners. They will not have been destroyed if it went for the selling of alcohol in our communities. Public drinking is already a problem in our societies. This imposes a threat on the positive upbringing of our children. Now imagine if it was to be sold in schools. The selling of alcohol in our schools will bring nothing but disgrace. The purpose of an educational institution is to equip learners with the weapons of education so that they can lead successful lives in the future, not to equip learners with the weapons that will later destroy their lives. I'm in support of the bills. I thank you.
Receive my undivided revolutionary greetings. My name is Dseto Victoria Musaso. I am the provincial organizer of the, of Congress of South African Students, which is better known as KOSAS. I am the provincial organizer of the, of Congress of South African Students, which is better known as COSAS. Um, we are of support of the bill. Um, we would like to state that, um, we are fighting for the standardization of education, especially in the higher sector, where we are saying that when a student is coming to the university, we want for a student to be able to study engineering as if they were going to do it at Virds and can move the next year and go to UPB. We need the standardization of education, even in our homeschools, to ensure that fight. Sorry. Sorry. I'm sorry, um. We also want to look at the course content of grade R learners. We are saying that our children do deserve to know that in their life skills, they should be taught farming, they should be taught life skills that are going to better them, even as humans, but moving also to, um, them going to grade one and so forth. We also want to say that as a student or a learner, you are a holistic cohesive social being and you need to focus on the social aspect of it. Are we saying that children who are homeschooled, do they receive the social aspect of a public or a formal school? We are also saying that we will continue to say, one student, one tablet. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Eh, we are closing now with an empty hall. Um, but let us just quickly say, eh... Mayor, let me thank you for staying with us. And, um, let me again apologize for what has transpired, um, earlier. We are going to, to look into it. I'm apologizing to you, but I'm also apologizing to your people. And, um, I'm gonna allow now, eh, Umfundisi to just do a vote of thanks.
Eh, once more. It has been indeed a marathon kind of a day, but your patience has paid off. Chairperson, let me, before I say, the vote of thanks indicate that all what has been said and done is gonna receive full attention, processed accordingly through the parliamentary processes. And at the end of the day, after having passed through this whole important portfolio committee, the reports which have been submitted will at the end of the day come face to face with the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa. That is where the final decision will be taken. If this bill sees the dawn of day, be to become an act or whatsoever, and, eh, you will be communicated to, you will end up knowing that ultimate outcome. However, Chairperson, let me take this opportunity to say, um, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. They normally would say patience pays. So indeed, you have stretched yourself to this level. Eh, the Marxists would say, better few, but better. You were the best for the day. And, eh, with all this, Chairperson, I'm handing it over to you to dissolve this congregation. I don't have the power. Should I, I did do, okay, by virtue of all powers vested in me, you stand dissolved. Get outside and see if there is not something you can patch up. If it is not there, the sned on geleker. See you next time.